Okay. Jeff? I will call the meeting back to water. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everybody here this evening and those watching on cable. And I'd like to just start off by making a couple of comments. You know, our community runs on volunteers and for that we are greatly appreciative. So we thank all of our community volunteers. On occasion, we have the opportunity to single out one of them for their contributions, thank them for all they have done for our community, and wish them well on whatever their next endeavor may be. So tonight, we have invited Sandy Carrick here to personally thank her for her hard work as co-chair of Christian Community Service and for her leadership and guidance making the North Reading Food Pantry visible to the people of North Reading through Facebook and northreadingfoodpantry.org, which is their website. Under her leadership, the North Reading Food Pantry joined the Greater Boston Food Bank, providing a weekly resource of food for North Reading families in need. She has also been instrumental in obtaining a refrigerator and freezer from the Rotary Club and receiving a donation of an air conditioner for the food pantry. In 2010, she spearheaded the Dare to Begin program. The Dare to Begin program awards interest-free loans to persons with low incomes who use the North Reading Food Pantry and are approved by a panel of businesspeople and representatives from the North Reading churches. Sandy is a dedicated advocate for the people of North Reading, directing clients to departments and organizations that are capable of addressing their needs and issues, also caring and respectful to all and the face of the North Reading Food Pantry. Her leadership, insight, and compassion will be sadly missed. And I open up to the board for any other comments. Mr. O'Leary?
All I know is, you know, along with the volunteers and the time and service they put in, there's also family members behind them that have allowed this to happen. And I know Sandy's husband, Russ, has been very supportive of the efforts throughout the years. But Sandy, honestly, you've been a true gift to the community. You've had such a positive impact and wish you nothing but the best.
Yes.
Miss Yule?
Sandy, I remember my involvement or my knowledge goes back to when, I believe, you were on Park Street by the turn of Washington Street. Don't you back there by the garage?
MHR, yeah.
Yeah. And to think about what you went through back then and all the work that you put into it and then to come over here and to be able to have a location here in Town Hall and to expand it the way that you've done is an achievement and an accomplishment well beyond norm. And you should feel very proud of what you've accomplished. And I think everybody in this room here is very proud of you for what you've done.
Mr. Priska?
Sandy, as you know, I've been on the board now six years. And one of the first things I did even before becoming a selectman was to introduce myself to the Food Pantry folks and just learn about the operation. And I found it absolutely amazing. At that time, going back six years ago, there was over 100 families in this town that get help on a monthly basis. And today, I think it's well over 175. You know, Mike close in the numbers. But just 175 in a town of 15,000 people? Thank God we have you and all your volunteers and what you were able to do. And then you look at the square footage of space that we provide. It's what you operate, what you have coming out of there is absolutely amazing. You created a great operation and a great team. I know it wasn't just you. I know you hate to have this recognition, but you certainly deserve it. So on behalf of myself and my family, thank you for watching out for those who need help.
Kate?
And I just want to thank you as well. I'm familiar with you just with regard to how you involve all the schools and the community groups in the effort. And we all recognize what a monumental effort it is and how much devotion you've given to it. So we are all appreciative and thank you for that quiet dedication and devotion.
And I know Sandy's very humble and she really, to get her here, I guess, is quite a challenge, but we managed to do it.
Well, we have the chief here, just in case you wouldn't come. We were trying to come pick you up.
So Sandy, if you'd come, come on up. We have a plaque to present to you. And I think Mr. Torres wants to take a picture. So we'll see how he wants to arrange it. How do you want to do it?
I want her sitting and I'll sit. You want her sitting and I'll sit.
No, you two all sit. And Sandy, you're ready.
Okay. He's the boss.
And I'm going to read.
You're going to, you're going to.
I'm going to read the plaque here and then Bob will take a picture. This is presented to Sandy Carrick in recognition of her nine years of exceptional leadership and devoted service to the North Reading Food Pantry, given on behalf of a grateful community by the Board of Selectmen on September 21st, 2015. Thank you.
That's good. Okay, that's fine. That's good. Speaking of the town pantry.
Leave the grand practice to drop them down. There's a lot to know about that.
Oh, my goodness.
Smile, smile, smile.
Pretend you're accepting a check.
I've done that a few times.
Thank you very much.
And all I can say is that it's not me, it's the team. Look at the wonderful volunteers that we have.
We know.
All the time that people put in, it's just an amazing group. And everything is going to continue just like I was never there.
I thought you were going to say. Here's a couple.
Oh, God. Right away, two of them, by 3:55.
Uh.
I don't know about this.
Call it clear.
I know, it's like.
Get away from the hips.
I'm just hoping everyone sees.
We're going to skip to public comment because there's some kind of public comment rather than wait through the whole thing.
She's got everybody that.
I'm going to make an adjustment to our agenda. I'm going to move up public comment next. I understand there's somebody here for public comment?
If I may, please.
Yes. Name and address.
Jane Krieger, 22 Cherry Street, Eisenhower Pond Park, and prior 15 Maple Road from time to time. First, I would like to thank members of the board for responding to my concerns in the park. Also, special thanks to the North Reading Police Department, in particular, the detectives and Officer Hagerty. Tonight, I am asking the board to take a second look at the actions afoot by the town engineer, Copelman Page, and the planning members that dictate substandard conditions to Maple Road. Every person is entitled to the health and safety protections of state and federal law. We can work together to put in place the proper infrastructure that close proximity to a school, among other things, require. Sorry. Although there have been multiple land transactions in the Eisenhower Pond area since the eminent domain taking in 2005 and prior, others were asked to wait. As an example, former selectman Delaney referred me to the former town administrator, Mr. Valuconis, whom I met with several times. He said, "The town's position is, if the park is not funded, then nothing is being done." In closing, if I may, for the record, the farm on Oakdale Road was not in existing condition in 2005. Private, excuse me, private wells, wetlands, and the lack of access to public water were existing conditions then and now. And a land use of farming conflicts with those conditions already in existence at the time the farm was allowed. And it should be accurately reported in the plans, reports, and studies or amended. For disclosure purposes, I am a lawyer admitted to the bar in the state of Connecticut. I am speaking for myself only. Thank you.
Did you get that? Okay.
Did she give you a copy?
What?
Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
Jane, do you want to leave a copy for the record?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry, I didn't have any time to prepare anything and I don't see very well. So I wrote if I was kind of bold.
That's okay.
But you're welcome to have.
We'll make a copy and return your wish.
Okay, well, you can keep it. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Next item, right on schedule, public hearing on New England Beverage Transfer of License Pledge. So I'll open the public hearing. And let's see if I can find it.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have a copy of the hearing?
To further to answer, do you have someone coming up to present it?
No, but we usually read the hearing.
We read the public hearing, which is.
Is there a copy of the hearing notice?
Probably? No.
Okay.
In the package. No. Yeah. Can you grab this?
I do not have that.
Yeah, I picked it up to wherever it is.
What number is it?
We're dragging down the hearing notice right now. It wasn't, it was omitted from the packet.
Yeah, it's not in here.
Not in here?
No.
No, it's not, no.
Michael, do we have a copy of the public hearing notice?
That's what she's getting.
What? She's going to get it right now. Okay.
All right. Excuse me. All right, well, give us a minute just so we can read the public hearing notice.
Usually, when all of us were clerk, we memorized them, so. No pressure.
It normally would have been in the packet. Jane?
Jane? Okay. Apologize. Okay, so, "North Reading Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen in Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, North Reading, Mass. on Monday, September 21st, 2015 at 7:45 on the application of Sonny Ria Inc. for the transfer of the packaged store All Alcohol License from Vavande Inc., DBA, New England Beverage and Redemption, and also for a pledge of license to Rockland Trust, license to be exercised at 160 Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a two-story building occupying 9,990 feet total square feet. Retail selling space is on the first floor, offices and storage on the second floor. It was posted on 9/10/2015." So with that.
I believe the petitioner is here.
Yes.
Maybe appropriate to have him give a brief presentation?
Give us a presentation on what you're intending to do.
If you could first identify yourself with your name and residential address.
My name is Sarah Patel. Everyone calls me Sunny. I currently live at Five O'Shute, Taunton, Massachusetts. Background of myself is I'm a recent graduate from University of Massachusetts, Amherst, with a double major in accounting and economics.
Can you speak up just a little?
Yeah. I thought, okay, sorry.
The microphone is for the TV watchers.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, so, recent college grad, went into public accounting. Not my area of expertise. I grew up in the retail industry. And then once an opportunity came for us to acquire a business that we're interested in, we are in process and going through the whole process. Sorry. Kind of nervous up here. Not used to speaking in front of the crowd. But yeah, so we're going through a process. Yeah, and yeah, any other questions? That's a little quick rundown on myself.
So you're acquiring the business from?
We're acquiring from Bob and Tom, the current owners of Vavande.
Just when you say "we," I see you.
Corporation, sorry, which is solely owned by myself.
Solely owned by yourself.
Correct.
Yeah, I see 100%. That's others.
I should say "myself."
"We" is me, okay.
Yeah, "we," sorry.
"We" is me, okay.
And I'm going to ask you to repeat your name, please.
Sarah Patel. Everyone calls me Sunny. Because I grew up with that, to the first grade, so it stuck.
That's easy.
Mr. Priska?
So I see in the application information that this is your first liquor store you've, you're going to manage.
Yes, it is.
Is there a transition between the you and the owners? Do you have an agreement in place for a lengthy transition for, you know, how the operations are run, especially from the standpoint of tips training and?
Yes. Currently, tip certified, went through the process, and there's going to be somewhere between four to eight weeks of training. We haven't discussed all the terms. We're going to slowly transition into the business and we're going to make sure we learn. When I say "we," Sonny Ria Incorporated, myself, I'm going to learn the whole business from inside out. Because I already have a background in retail, the C-store business, but the only, I guess, curve ball, and this is the alcohol aspect of it, which is makes, you know, there's a lot more responsibility because you don't, obviously, you don't want to sell to minors. You don't want to have, get into, I forget the name of the law, it starts with a D.
Nancy Antenucci.
Sorry.
This is Mrs. Antenucci, Mr. Chairman.
No, just, yeah, I was the original owner. I don't know who knew D. I know Mr. O'Leary does. But my daughter Nicole has been part of this franchise for all this, this business for 12 years. She did the transition with Mr. Romano and Mr. Polari. And she will be the one in the transition for Mr. Patel.
Okay.
If that helps at all.
It makes me feel better.
Makes you feel better.
The question that.
I personally have not met him yet.
The question that I was going to ask was related to, obviously, the store is in operation.
Yes.
There are employees there now. And I assume those employees are tips trained. Are those employees being retained as part of this deal?
Yes.
There's going to be no change whatsoever.
No change. My daughter has the option to continue to manage, which she has for 12 years, even when my husband and I owned it. For this transition, the only thing I haven't seen, which I'll deal with Mr. Patel himself, is I still have a lien on the property. And as long as my assets are secured for this 100%, I've dealt with both Tom and Bob for the last two years. Honestly, they weren't onsite owners. They left 90% of it, if not more, up to my daughter Nicole, who has done everything that comes to hiring, firing, any managerial decisions. And that is basically what's going to be passed on to Mr. Patel himself. So still the same standards. Dean Incorporated 25 years ago, I'm praying we can still uphold. And I don't know if you ever saw the record for New England Beverage, Vavande, or whatever they're going to call it now. In the 25 years we opened the doors, we've never sold to minors. We're very due diligent when it comes to selling to minors. Being a mother of five, that's a huge thing to me. Money's secondary to serving to minors. And that's what I instill in anyone that's deciding on taking over this license. I don't stand behind anyone that's just in it for money. And I still live in this town, although Dean's been gone for three years. I still have the five kids here, and now my grandchildren are growing up here. So I still have the same attribute, the same mindset when it comes to this business. And because, like I said, I still have a significant control of this business, I don't want just anyone taking it on. And I am all for Mr. Patel. He is what he claims he is. And as far as any questions or anything, I mean, there is a lot he may not answer because he's never been in the license, I mean, the liquor industry before. But even though I'm not on the approval, I have been down there several times, helping my daughter through certain issues, and still the same standards as it was 25 years ago when he opened the door.
Mrs. Manipelli?
I definitely want to hear directly from him about his business plan because he's, he's here applying to take it over, so. And you're from Taunton. You said you're from Taunton. Do you have any plans to relocate to this area?
I'm going to be onsite manager. I'm going to be spending roughly 40 to 60 hours a week at the location. The commute is not too bad because I have a little, we have another, we have other enterprises within, closer to the Boston area, so it's easier for us to, for me to come here directly from random and such.
Connects to a couple of follow-ups.
Yes, of course. Could you continue to speak up a little bit?
It would be helpful for everybody. Yeah, so.
You are going to be the manager there.
The commute itself is not going to be that bad. I'm going to be onsite manager for about 40 to 60 hours a week on average.
And I think Selectman Maseri is asking in terms of the, I could be wrong, but in terms of who you're going to, are you going to keep the same employees?
The staff, the transition is going to stay exactly the same. I can assure you of that for the foreseeable future. Nothing's going to change in terms of the team members and stuff. I, myself, am not going to be on salary just to maintain favorable at a certain amount, but I will be there physically every week.
You are tips trained, correct?
I am, correct.
Mr. Priska?
So maybe Tom Administrator can answer this question for me. So in the license application, it talks about Rockland Trust will have an interest in the license as a form of collateral. So I assume that's a typical process that we go through in these types of situations? And so when the license is written, we have to have an agreement with Rockland Trust as well, as we do with the?
So this is a unique transaction because it's not only a request to transfer the ownership of the location, but it's also a request to pledge the value of the license against the loan that's being secured for acquiring the property. So that this is unique, and my understanding is that it has happened over the past, over the years, but not often.
Right.
So the nature of that transaction is such that we've been in discussions with the ABCC on multiple occasions over the past three or four weeks since we got the application. And we've received instruction from them to handle it in the way that we are handling it at this point in time, which is to take up the application to transfer as well as the application for the pledge of the license at the same time. There'll be a closing. I'm not sure if the date has been scheduled at that point in time, but there'll need to be a final promissory note that would be presented by the financing institutions for Sunny to present to the current owner to close the transaction. And then all of that paperwork would then be submitted to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission to be approved. So this is a bit of a unique transaction because it includes a pledge of a license, but we have been in touch with the ABCC to make sure we have the process down appropriately.
Do you have a follow-up? Yes, a follow-up to that. So we just heard there's a lien on the property. I consider that a financial interest in this property. Wouldn't that also be listed, shouldn't that be listed here?
I believe that the, one of the financing sources is the current owner, if I'm not mistaken, based on what's identified, if I recall from the paper.
Is that, is that the lien that, is that? No, I heard that Mrs. Antenucci. Antenucci said she had a lien on the property.
On the real estate. It's a different, they're two separate transactions. There's the business, business assets, the license, one entity, and then there's the real estate.
Okay. Mr. Yule, you head your end.
Yeah, is that the real estate, is that the building or the land?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, yes, yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The pledge against the, the license against the loan, could you explain that to me a little bit? Was, I mean, the bank, it's tied to the loan with the bank?
The short answer would be yes. The individual needs to demonstrate that he has collateral to secure the loan. And what he is pledging is the license itself in this case. I've never been part of a situation where the license has been foreclosed on, but I'm going to make a, I'll make a, I'll take a little bit of liberty to try to describe how I see it would transact. But if the individual failed to make payment to the entity that loaned him the funds, they'd have the opportunity to foreclose. And there's a number of things that they could take from him, one of which would be to come to the Board of Selectmen and ask for a transfer of the license to the entity or to the bank or whoever they identify to secure the loan.
Okay. I remember that discussion.
But again, I've never gone through that transaction at that point in time, so I'm kind of projecting forward.
Mr. O'Leary?
I can clarify. Because in my line of work, I'm a back examiner, so I see these things the last 25 years.
How'd I do?
Yeah, you did very well. Basically, it's collateral. They secure all business assets, accounts receivables, and so on and so forth. And also, generally, under the terms and conditions, they reserve the right to come in, if he defaults, to come in and continue to operate the business. Pledge of the license allows them to come in, ask this board to transfer the license to a different manager in order to keep the entity going and ongoing and get the cash flow so they can get paid back.
But at one point, would the bank own that, that license?
He's pledging his interest in the license. No, we still control the license. So in other words, the bank would still have to come to this board for authorization to transfer or notification of change of manager or transfer of the license to another entity. So if they were to go and take possession of the thing and of the business, continue to operate it, they'd have to come before the board first. And then if they're going to transfer ownership of the business, it would still have to be subject to the approval of the board. But it's an asset of the, it's an asset of the business that he's just pledging.
Mr. Yule, I think the gentleman has a comment.
I just want to add to that to help, because the inventory itself is worth a huge amount of money. In case there is a default, the bank is sitting on all its inventory, so they have no legal right to sell it. The pledge will allow them to sell it. The inventory makes back some of their money.
Okay, okay. So my last question is regarding the sale of liquor to minors. I don't know if you're familiar with what has transpired in the town in the past six months or so, where we got to require a liquor establishment to close for a period of three days, all right, for the sale of liquor to minors. And I'm letting you know that because if you're in Taunton, you may not know that.
I know New England Beverage has a very stellar record in terms of that, and I don't plan on changing the team.
Well, I'm concerned about, it's only your record now that's really going to matter. The past X amount of years does not matter at this point.
Okay.
But I just wanted to put you on notice that this is a very serious thing that we take in this town because we want to protect our.
And it's my livelihood, so I will take it just as seriously as much as anyone else. And I care for the community, which I do in this sense, so that is very important to me.
Mr. Manipelli? Do you have a question?
No.
Any other questions on the board?
Just a final statement.
Yes.
Sort of ties into what Mr. Yule, where he was going with that. I'm just going to flat out say it. The license is a privilege. It's not an entitlement. So I hope that you do run your operation with all the integrity in the world because, you know, we've had a trend in a negative direction in this town, and I'd like to see what the Antenucci family has done and see that integrity continue to uphold as you go forward. And I have all the confidence in the world you will, will do that based on there's a transition. But please walk away knowing that this license is a privilege. It's not an entitlement. So please manage it that way.
Oh, yeah. It is our livelihood, like I said, so you have most respect then.
I'll be voting in favor of correcting the transfer of the license.
So anyone in the audience have any comments, questions? Mr. O'Leary?
Just in relation to, I'm happy to hear that you're retaining the current personnel because they are very personable and they're very well-trained and have run a very good establishment over a number of years. And I think Mrs. Antenucci's endorsement, to me, is worth something. So I wish you the best of luck, and I intend on, I intend on voting in favor of the transfer.
I will close the public hearing. Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the transfer of license and pledge of license of Sonny Ria.
Sonny Ria.
Sonny Ria Incorporated, doing business as New England Beverage, 160 Main Street.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Manipelli, second by Mr. O'Leary. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any animus? Thank you. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Does that include the pledge?
That motion?
Yes. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No.
Any other questions from the board?
Just a final statement?
Yes.
This sort of ties into what Mr. Yule, where he was going with that, I'm just going to flat out say it, the license is a privilege, it's not an entitlement. So, I hope that you do run your operation with all the integrity in the world, because we've had a trend in a negative direction in this town, and I'd like to see what the Antinucci family has done, and see that integrity continue to uphold as you go forward. And I have all the confidence in the world you will, will do that, based on there's a transition. But please walk away knowing that this license is a privilege, it's not an entitlement, so please manage it that way.
Oh, yeah, it is our livelihood, like I said, so you have most respect then.
I'll be voting in favor of the transfer of the license.
So, anyone in the audience have any comments, questions? Hearing that, Mr. O'Leary?
Just in relation to, I'm happy to hear that you're retaining the current personnel, because they are very personable, and they're very well-trained, and have run a very good establishment over a number of years, and I think Mrs. Antinucci's endorsement, to me, is worth something, so I wish you the best of luck, and I intend on, I intend on voting in favor of the transfer.
I will close the public hearing. Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the transfer of license and pledge of license of Sonny Raya.
Sonny Raya.
Sonny Raya Incorporated, doing business as New England Beverage, 160 Main Street.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Manipelli, second by Mr. O'Leary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Thank you, good luck.
Congratulations.
Does that include the pledge?
That motion?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Best of luck. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an informational hearing, a Toba Town meeting. We will go through.
You're welcome, thank you.
As I'm told, it is.
Including street acceptances and a vote layout of Article 22 and 23. Mr., you're going to go through a presentation, Michael?
Anybody on that side may want to move over, I'm not sure if you can see it, there's plenty of seats.
Mr. Chairman, as we advertised, street acceptance hearings for the first, as the two articles to be taken up first, Articles 22 and 23 will begin there. I believe in your packet that you should have information relative to the laying out of the way for both Swan Pond Road and for Rondon Terrace. And there, I believe there's also a motion to sign, to accept the layout and to sign a plan. However, I believe we're still waiting for, did they both come in? They did. Great. Good work.
We can do the signing at the end.
Correct, that's correct, yes, and they're over here with the pens to be signed. So, just to give, I guess by way of background, Article 22 on the warrant pertains to Swan Pond Road, as the town is well aware, at this point in time, we had the legislature approve and Governor Baker sign a special act removing a portion of Swan Pond Road from Article 97 Conservation Protection. This article would accept a portion of Swan Pond Road, making it an accepted public way and making it eligible for state chapter 90 road construction funding. This is the extent that we believe is appropriate to be accepted by the town at this point. If you move further beyond this section of road into the Swan Pond area and the Swan Pond Road development area, you'll find that there are situations where the road bisects private property, where we don't have an easement on the road, and wouldn't be well-advised to take the road at this point. So, we've identified as much of the stretch of the road as we can for a acceptance, and I brought it forth for acceptance at the town meeting.
Any comments from, any board member? Any comments from anybody in the audience? It is a public hearing. Yes?
Uh, the slide's incorrect, the Finance Committee voted to recommend.
Voted to recommend?
Yes. It's in the warrant that one else.
I'm sorry, your name and address, please.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Swan Pond Road as shown on a plan drawn by LeBlanc Survey Associates Incorporated dated September 8, 2014, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. Okay, Mr. Chairman, second by Mr. O'Leary. We're going to be assigning responsibilities for these articles tonight, and there'll be no need to go back and go over Article 22, so, does anyone want to step up and present this article, Tommy? Mr. Yule?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, we'll take the rest of them in order after 23. Michael?
Uh, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Are you going to vote on it, Bob?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you. Second street acceptance is more of a standard street acceptance. Rondon Terrace, there's a map that's been mailed with the warrant, shows it connects from Old Andover Road to Route 125. Again, acceptance would make it eligible as a state chapter 90 funding road construction, road construction funding eligible. I believe that there's a recommendation, and I didn't reference it before, but I believe there's a recommendation from the Planning Commission to support acceptance from both of, for both of these streets, so thank you for their effort. Mr. Hayden, I see you back there.
And the town engineer.
And from the town engineer as well, and I believe that's documented in the packet as well, so I'm sorry for not noting that for Article 22. Similarly, for Article 23, again, more of a standard acceptance versus Swan Pond Road, which has been laid out for some period of time, or in use, I should say, and traveled for some period of time. And there's a motion in for the acceptance as well.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the layout of Rondon Terrace as shown on a plan drawn by Dana F. Perkins Incorporated dated July 30, 2015, by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second. Second, Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Yule, will you take this, too?
That is one.
And I just want to comment that the Board of Selectmen has recommended both 22 and 23 at a previous meeting. This is just for the accepting of the layout, which is part of the overall process of getting the street accepted. And we'll be signing a bunch of layout drawings at the end of our meeting, based on our vote. So, you want to go back now to Article 1?
Certainly. So, Article 1, we'll be here and to act on reports of town officers and committees. Among the reports that the town meeting should expect to hear are reports for an update on our efforts to connect to the Mass Water Resources Authority for water effective July 1 of 2019. I believe there'll also be an update provided, excuse me, Selectman Prisco, will there be an update from the Economic Development Committee as well at the town meeting?
Yes.
We'll be expecting that, I believe, from the Economic Development Committee, and there may be other updates that come in as well from other boards or commissions, depending upon what the pleasure of those commissions are.
And I saw a town moderator here, John. So, there will be a report from a committee working on town water, and we would like to do that first, if possible. And I have no knowledge of any other reports, but I'm sure there will be some.
Yeah, I know of a couple of them.
And Michael Prisco will be making that presentation.
We're going to have some visitors from?
Yes, oh, that's the other thing, we're going to have the town manager and who else from?
Some of his Board of Selectmen members, and potentially one of his technical people in attendance, as well as a couple of folks from MWRA.
And what we would like to do is, because there's a lot of waiting outside for visitors, when we get them all together, we'd like to motion the town meeting to accept their presence at the meeting, rather than wait for the general list, if that's possible.
This is the first item on the, again, so there'll be a row.
Right, but it's sometimes, you know, we start reading that list at 7:15 or whatever.
But again, but again, I mean, don't do the pledge until they're in. We're not going to start the articles.
No, no, I know that, we just didn't want to keep them waiting out in the corridor.
Well, they can come inside, they still need to be on the list.
I understand that.
Okay.
So, you're saying we could seat them if we wanted to in advance of?
There's a few people they can seat it, in the commitment of the others, they just need to be on the list.
That's fine, no problem with that. I wasn't implying they shouldn't be on the list. Thank you.
I thought you were asking for a separate quote.
No.
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay. Okay, so on Article 1, we've already recommended it, and Mrs. Manipelli, would you like to present that?
Sure.
Article 2?
So, this is just a standard presentation that we've had to show the balance of variety of available funds going into the financial articles for discussion. You see, it ranges from free cash stabilization, debt capital stabilization, cell tower, ambulance, OPEB fund, water infrastructure stabilization, and anything available from raisin appropriate. I'll just note, and I'll make a comment in the Town Administrator's report as well, the town does have certified free cash available as of June 30, 2015, in the amount of $1,693,928. And I would be, I think, remiss without recognizing the work of Liz and our advocates at the Department of Revenue for getting us certified with notice and advance at town meeting. They've had quite a bit of turnover in terms of staffing in the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Services, but they expressed a commitment to prioritize towns that had an October town meeting or a fall town meeting, and they did just that to get us that certified number. So, thank you to them and to listen to her staff.
Any questions regarding the available capital from FinCom?
Any prior year bills?
Any questions?
Article 21, prior year bills.
Okay, and well, prior year's bills, is there an amount?
There is, so I'll go up to that, it's $224.50. It's a water, a water department, Department of Public Works, Water Division expense that would be funded from the Water Enterprise Operating Budget to pay that bill.
And, Mr. Manipelli, would you take that on?
And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm going to go back just one moment to show the funding sources for all of the financial articles as we have them identified at this point in time. You'll see bills of a prior year. Well, the slide, I think, speaks for itself, it's really a summary. I'm going to go through each article, so it might be more productive to discuss them per slide, if you'd like, but that's the summary to show.
Okay. Article 3?
Article 3, and I'm going to defer to the Finance Director to correct me if I've misstated this, because I did make a modification of the language she gave me. The Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund is due to receive a transfer in of $200,000 pursuant to the capital plan that's been established by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. In addition to that, there's $156,000 from the so-called early pilot payment from the Hillview Commission that will also be transferring in, for a total of $356,000, which will increase the fund balance to just over $1.1 million. What I do.
And at this point, we have listed recommendation to be at town meeting, does the board want to make a recommendation at this point?
Yeah, move to recommend.
Second? Second, by Mr. O'Leary, discussion? All in favor?
Motion by Mr. O'Leary. Aye.
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 That's unanimous, and let's see, Michael, you want to do Article 3?
Sure.
Article 4?
This would be for appropriation of money to the stabilization fund, which has a balance of just over $2 million. I do not anticipate requesting or recommending a transfer in to the stabilization fund at this point in time. For this and for the next article, we've been looking towards, including transfers in as part of our overall discussion of the operating budget in the spring. Recall that when we get to the OPEB article, we put in $125,000, we have a stated goal of $250,000. But for both Article 4 and 5, the recommendation would be to not transfer in funding at this point in time. At this point, it remains a recommendation to be made at town meeting. If there were to be a change, certainly that could be enacted, but I do not anticipate requesting a transfer in at this point.
So, you're just suggesting we make a decision at town meeting?
With the likely decision being to pass over.
And it would be most likely to pass over.
That's correct.
Article 4 and 5. Michael, why don't you do all of those?
The easy ones.
Well, you're up there, 1, 2, 3, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, Article 6. Saving this one for Mr. O'Leary.
Article 6 would appropriate money for special counsel legal expenses. This article would provide additional funding for legal expenses related to the secondary school building project. Requires assignment by, for a motion, and of course, a presentation. We could take that up if you'd like, or I can go through the article, and then you can assign at the end if you'd like.
Let's go through the article, let us know what the recommendation is for money, and then we'll vote a recommendation.
The background, March 19, 2012, town meeting approved $107,728,000 for the middle high school building project. A debt exclusion was approved at a subsequent election. On March 18, 2013, town meeting approved an additional $15,500,000 for the middle high school building project. A debt exclusion was approved at subsequent election. The Board of Selectmen committed to pursue legal avenues available to the town to hold the architect and project manager accountable for the unanticipated increased cost of the project. In the spring of 2013, the Board of Selectmen engaged special counsel to pursue legal avenues available. The parties involved are the town of North Reading, special counsel being Furman Gregory Deptula, PMA Consultants, which is the project manager, Doran Whittier, which is the architect. Special counsel funding. Total expended to date is $194,852.50. An additional $100,000 has been approved, but not expended. We're projecting a request of $200,000 to continue legal action, including associated expert analyses by independent architects, project managers, and cost estimators. A general note about litigation, and I'll make the same presentation available for the board for the town meeting. As you know, litigation strategy and substantive updates are purely an executive session issue, and it would prejudice the town's interest to discuss these issues at any open meeting, including town meeting. Regarding this particular matter, the involved parties, town, PMA, and Doran Whittier, are engaged in confidential negotiations and evaluations of any claims between them.
Move to recommend, move to recommend $200,000.
Second. Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Prisco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. And so, we're recommending that at Article 6, and Mr. O'Leary, would you take that?
Gladly.
You have a representative on the?
Thank you.
Article 7, operating budget.
Article 7 would amend the fiscal year 2016 operating budget. Would address projected deficiencies in the following accounts, CPC salaries, code enforcement travel expenses, the salary pool, and retirements. Would transfer surplus funds projected from the following accounts, Florida Health salaries and travel expenses, Conservation Commission salaries, DPW town building salaries and expenses, elder services, small capital expenses, and raisin appropriate. We believe that we have a fairly accurate projection of what the numbers will be associated with these, but we've not put them in the presentation. I have forwarded them to the board, and we'll review them with the financial planning team at tomorrow morning's financial planning meeting. For the information, for the edification of the board members, in your folder in Dropbox for tonight's meeting, you'll see a detailed presentation that you can review at your leisure, and we'll make all this information available the evening of town meeting, with a detailed accounting per account.
Any questions on the board? Any questions on the FinCom? Anyone else? And this will be a recommendation made at town meeting, and the chair will present the article. Article 8, fund revaluations.
This would fund $80,000 from free cash for the revaluation of all town property, and this is the triennial revaluation, as I look to the assessor, that will occur pursuant to state statute.
And we've already recommended that? The amount was?
Eighty.
Eighty thousand.
You may have?
Eight hundred, eighty thousand dollars.
Eight thousand. At a previous meeting, I believe I said $76,000, I'm incorrect, it's 80,000.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so this is the cost, the rest of the house is up to the valuations that you haven't captured yet, out of the three years?
I defer to the assessor to give a further explanation. Mr. Chairman.
Jeff, you want to do that?
Sure.
The old safety officer.
I'm easy.
The tri, Debbie Carboni, assessing manager. What the triennial recertification is, it's state mandated to reevaluate the entire town every three years. It really has nothing to do with the cyclical cycle that you're referring to, Mike. We do that every year, on the cyclical, and do the third, the third, and the third of the properties, to get those values up. The triennial reevaluation actually reevaluates every single parcel in the town for neighborhood land values, for different style homes that have to be changed, such as if the colonials need to be increased. as if the colonials need to be increased, also our chapter lands, such as our farmlands. So, the triennial recertification is done every three years. Last, for FY14 triennial, we actually appropriated $100,000. So, with the work that we've been doing on the annual basis with the cyclical, we have reduced that by $20,000. So, we are working at getting the RFPs down. Does that answer your question?
I think we're saying the same thing. I guess I just used a different term that you obviously, I just used a different term, obviously, but I knew, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Go. The Board previously has recommended this article.
Yeah.
Article nine, fund water permitting.
Jeff, you doing that one?
I'm doing the eight.
What? Jeff's doing the eight.
Mr. Chairman, Article nine would fund water permitting. It would reappropriate remaining bond proceeds from the Tower Hill Water Tower Anchor Bowl project to the amount of $77,568 to be used toward water permitting and engineering support for the MWRA Water Connection Project. This, again, will provide us the ability to access technical assistance in our, in our discussions centrally with the Town of Reading as we look to discuss the terms of intermunicipal agreement. There is a companion article that I'll go to as well, and the Board can take action. That's Article 10, which would fund MWRA Water Connection Engineering Study. And this would be a transfer. We're requesting $200,000 from the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund for the MWRA Water Connection Engineering Study. It's important to note, at this point in time, from our consulting engineers, we have a projected cost for this project of only $140,000. But as I referenced earlier, we, in a previous meeting, this is intended for us to get a jump start on any design activities that need to occur in advance of a potential June 2016 approval of the funding for the complete design of the water interconnection through the Town of Reading to the MWRA. We've left, we've asked for and requesting an amount above and beyond the projected expense in the event that anything unforeseen comes up, so that we don't need to come back to town meeting to ask for additional assistance, and so that we can continue to make progress towards design being approved as soon as the June 2016 town meeting, so that we can meet the July 1st, 2019 deadline that the Board established last year.
Could you go to the list of funding that you put up previously? So, I'm sorry, the available resources. So, we have water infrastructure stabilization fund of $741,958, and what is not on there, or maybe it's included in it, is the retained earnings from water. It's not on the chart.
That's correct. Retained earnings for fiscal year, both the year ending June 30th, 2015.
Could we add that to the list?
Sure, sure. For the record, it's $254,787, but we'll add it to the list.
So, Article nine, we've already approved or recommending, and Michael, will you take that? And we also take number 10, which has also been voted by the Board. Article 11.
Okay. Thought we had another inconsistency with the finance report, but it looks like we got it correct.
We all said.
So, I apologize. We are, yes, thank you. Article 11 would appropriate funds for the little school roof replacement or repair project. At the moment, this stands as a bonding project in the amount of $263,450 for the replacement or repair of the roof at the little school. That amount is an estimate as initially submitted to the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program in February. The superintendent has been working diligently with the school business manager and the facility superintendent to have the project manager and architect assigned to this project by the MSBA evaluate the condition of the roof and to provide an updated number by October 1st. It's our hope that we'll have that updated number in the event that the cost is any number different than that $263,450. We expect that it will be. We don't know to what extent it will differentiate, but we know that that number that we have, $263,000, was a result of a preliminary review conducted to submit the grant Accelerated Repair Program application in February. Again, the superintendent's dialogue has been a productive one, and the project manager and architect for this project have committed to try to get us information so that we can project a more accurate cost by October 1st. And once that's been received, we'll provide that information, not only to the Board, but to the members of the Finance Committee and the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Would you speak to the issue that we face in terms of the approval by MSBA and the timeline issue?
This is a new program. I think it's in its third or fourth year, and it's called an accelerated repair program, and it is intended to essentially provide funding to school districts or towns that are able to respond quickly and act quickly to make funding available to conduct a repair. They generally wanna see the repair conducted the summer after. You've been invited to participate. As the Board knows, we were invited to participate right ahead of the June town meeting, after the warranted close for the town meeting. The deadline by which, the flow of events is this. We won't, we'll have an October town meeting, and then after that, the final evaluation by the project manager and architect will occur. The deadline for us to provide funding for this project or to demonstrate that we have funding for this project, I believe it ends up being in December, but I looked at the Finance Director if I've misstated that, or the Finance Committee members, but I think it's December when we calculated it out. Regardless, it's before the next town meeting in June that we would have to give a signal to the MSBA that we have appropriated funding for this project. So, rather than have the need to call a special town meeting between now and then, the intention, after discussion with the Financial Planning Team, is to identify as best as possible what the amount is as a maximum number, and again, subject to what the number might be, make a request for that number.
Okay. So, if we look at the current $263,450 projection, this is the total, if this were to hold, this would be the total cost of the project, and the MSB share picking up that cost would be what percentage roughly?
Forty-six, forty-eight percent.
Forty-six to forty-eight percent, roughly in that range. And, Board of Selectmen, we're gonna recommend this at town meeting, and we're still gonna do that because we don't have a final number, but Mr. O'Leary, will you take that?
Sure.
I just feel more comfortable if you update your slide, just to make sure that it wasn't, you put the estimate, word estimate near that number.
Oh, sure.
It doesn't clearly say that.
I appreciate the feedback, and we'll make that change.
Anything else on Article 11? Article 12, fund repairs to town buildings. Mr. Gilbert?
So, this would be the annual fall article to fund repairs to town buildings, appropriation from free cash. I've been engaged in review, among the review of many other things, for the town meeting with the Public Works Director with regard to this particular article. But before I go through this article, I know the Board had requested an opportunity to see an update with regard to previous projects. So, on here, we have the fiscal year 2013, and, sorry, the fall 2013 and fall 2014 town meeting articles with status updates from the Department of Public Works. And you'll see here that the work from the 2013 town meeting article has been completed. As you may recall, we revised last year's plan to carry over $9,000 that had been unexpended from the previous year for a total of investment of $59,000. The projects that have been completed are the window tinting, the hose connection relocation at the fire department, the maintenance area, automatic bay door openers being installed, the repair and rebuilding of the masonry side entrance steps at the building on the common. We're in the process of rebidding the repair and repainting of the exterior wall, non-masonry surfaces. That'll largely be the window frames. And there are two projects for which we're waiting to fill the building superintendent position, which we expect an individual will start on Monday. That's the flooring in the finance offices and additional flooring in the finance wing to be replaced. So, that is the status of the previous projects. I'm gonna go back. So, the request at this point in time, you'll see that it totals $40,200. Public Works Director and I are still engaged in discussions for the balance, if any, that we'd be requesting from town meeting, or that we would be spending that funding for. If we don't come to a number different than that, then we'd be asking for an approval at $40,200, but I expect it will come close to the $50,000. The projects in question right now are the second front exterior door that needs replacement, and that's the main entrance door, additional fire alarm strobes and horns in the town meeting, in the town hall, the removal of window air conditioning units that are no longer in use in the town hall, installing window tinting on the front side only of the library, vertical blinds in the front side of the library, removing three window unit air conditioning, window air conditioning units and replacing windows in the library, and privacy improvements in the Director's Office. And there's two projects in the DPW garage. One is the construction of overhead cover for the waste storage area, which is currently outside, and the repair of a masonry chimney in the amount of $4,500. To the extent possible, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Mrs. Gilbert?
Yeah.
Can you get to a microphone, please? You got one right there.
Could you please tell me what the construct overhead cover for waste storage? What's waste storage?
My understanding is that we have a location where I believe its motor walled is able to be disposed of. Currently, it does not have a cover over it, so it's subject to the elements outside.
So, this isn't the antique closet house?
No, that is not it. This is more like a shed. Basically, it's been described to me as a shed without the four walls, but with the roof only. But if you're interested in that. Yes, sir.
Just where you have the window units, if they're AC units, if we could just make that change, though it says AC units, it doesn't, I mean, you have window units and you have ACs, it's completely different.
Sure. I appreciate. Can you go back to the previous slide? Mm-hmm. I know it's tough to read. I apologize.
No, no, it's okay.
Where are you looking, Michael?
So, I'm looking at the bottom three.
The bay flooring and it's all laminate.
So, we get 15, 25, 35, 40. So, we got roughly $40,000 in what we approve at last town meeting. Still not completed yet.
That's correct, yes. And again, I can speak just to the, a couple of them, particularly the town hall repair and maintenance of the exterior wall, non-masonry surfaces. I think the Department was prepared to move forward with a contract, but it didn't meet the procurement requirements. It needed to be rebid, and as you see, it's been, it's being rebid. The other two, which is flooring projects that you see there, I've spoken with the Public Works Director, and those projects are tied directly to the renovation of Room 10 that we've approved in the fiscal year 2016 project. And the reason I say that is that we're intending to bid them all as one package and to have one contract to provide us a price to do the work, both in the financial offices and in the, in Room 10.
So, there's no projection for when that's gonna get done?
At the moment, no. I'm not able to offer that. I apologize, but I couldn't give you an accurate timeline at this point in time.
So, we don't have any issue associated with that money? We have a certain amount of time, I believe, right, to execute the spending?
It's an article not unique to fiscal year. And again, I purposely held back on going right to the $50,000, because I think that we have work to do from previous years. We're not caught up at this point in time, so I, you know, something would need to really jump out to be a priority to need to, to be funded at this point, beyond what I've identified.
Yeah, that's my only concern.
Okay, that it? And we've already recommended that. We voted on it. So, Kate, would you take care of that?
Sure.
And Article 13, appropriate supplemental funds with J.T. Berry. I believe we're going to pass over that.
Sorry, that's what's anticipated, although I would suggest the Board take action at the evening of town meeting.
You wanna wait until town meeting?
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Frisco?
Yep.
You own it?
I got it.
Okay. Next item, sale of parkland, Magnolia Road, map 33 fossil 71. Mr. Gilbert?
So, the article would transfer a parcel of land within the Eisenhower Pond Park to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal government purposes. The Board would then be authorized to file a petition with the state legislature to authorize the transfer and the change in use of the property, which is currently presented, protected as conservation land. Sorry, parkland. The Board would then be able to convey this land to the owner of an abutting parcel for septic system repair, excuse me, or replacement. And I believe that the residents here this evening, Ms. Taylor, good evening.
Mr. Frisco?
Is there any option for us? Do we have to sell the whole property? Is there any option for us to sell just what the homeowner needs to accomplish, whatever they have to accomplish?
I think that that's entirely an option that's available. It would result...
The thing to do with this, we'd be conveying the entire property back to the control of the Board of Selectmen.
And the Board would then have the authority to dispose of the property, presumably to the abutting property owner.
Okay.
But to answer the question, though, I think that the Board would be within its rights to say, its rights to say that it would only be looking to sell a portion of the property rather than the property in its entirety, but that's gonna be subject to the needs of the abutting property owner.
Okay.
But in order to split the property, the town would incur more costs.
That's correct.
To subdivide.
To subdivide and record, and then transfer portion. So, it's, depending on what benefit it is to the town or the abutter.
Just asking the question for just a different idea. I assume it did cost, you know, some money to do it.
So, the Board of Selectmen previously recommended this?
Yep.
And, Mr. O'Leary, could you take this?
Mr. Chairman, there's, I know that there was a bit of public discussion with regard to the consideration that the town might be looking to secure. We can certainly have a conversation with the owner after the meeting, if that's appropriate, or I don't know if we wanna provide feedback, because certainly the community witnessed the discussion.
Yeah, it's the public hearing. The abutter to this property is here. If you wanna give your justice.
I think it's important, just for disclosure purposes, you know, how we acquired it, we get right there, what our costs, the town's costs were, what occurred for the protanto awards and taking were, and then any additional costs associated with the transfer, what those would be, just to get an idea. It's still subject to further review.
And I believe that Ms. Taylor has that information in terms of what we paid for the property and the proration, the same information that we discussed in terms of the value.
And if she's here, and she wants to make a comment, she's certainly welcome to...
Valerie Taylor, 13, Magnolia Road. At the last town meeting, we had discussed that there'd be some conversation about what I'd be vulnerable as far as paying. You know, I understand that this, the town meeting, once it's voted, we'll just get it out of that Parks and Recreation, but, you know, at the last meeting, we discussed, you know, what I'd actually be looking at for a price tag, and I know that that number could be fluid based on different, you know, protocols that might be taken, whether it's a land swap, or whether it's a straight conveyance, or whether it was a portion of that. But, you know, as the owner of the property, like, I need to be, I need to have some type of understanding of what it is that's gonna cost me and my family, and what's the time parameters around it, considering right now, we have, I have a very serious public health issue for me and my three minor children.
At this point, the Board can't do anything until we get through this process, and that'll take a vote of the legislature to turn the property back to the control of the Board of Selectmen, at which point then we'd be in a position to negotiate whatever makes sense protecting the town's interest, of course.
But it's just, it's important to note, at the time, the previous owner, the town acquired two parcels from that family to the tune of approximately $16,000 plus conveyance, and it was about square foot, it's very similar in size. So, if you were to prorate it, you'd be about $8,000 bucks, you know, $8,000 per parcel, plus transfer costs. And historically, it's run us $1,200, $1,400 to do all the workup of the deeds and all the information, filing, recording fees, and all the rest. So, really, the exposure probably is somewhere around, you know, $9,500 or something like that. But again, subject to change as far as what you're looking at, for the town to recover what it's paid and will have to pay in order to convey it and recuperate what we paid for it.
Okay, but respectfully, I don't really think that, the numbers that the town administrator provided, it was the land's value at the time they're taking was around $35,000. Town paid out the pro-tantum for about eight. However, there's currently a septic system on that land, as well as leak, there's a leaching field, so I would say that that appraised value... field, so I would say that that appraised value isn't that number. The value significantly decreased based on-
Two different issues. What, you've got an assessed valuation on the property, which does not necessarily correspond with what the actual value is in relation to when we acquired it.
Okay.
Assessed value is about $34,000. But it's not a free, it's a freestanding lot, it's not a buildable lot, so that could call into question the value. What we paid for it at the time of the takings was approximately $8,000, plus, plus or minus. So that's what we paid for it. And that's what was offered as protanto award, was not challenged based upon appraisals, and so that's what the town paid for. So that's what we're into it for. When I say we, all of us collectively, plus the cost of transfer. So that's what the exposure would be and what the cost the town has been and will be at the time of the transfer. What's on it probably shouldn't be there, because obviously someone built a septic system, or there was a septic system built on that owner's property at the time, but it wasn't properly recorded anywhere here in town hall, and it wasn't disclosed, and there wasn't any dispute in relation to the town acquiring it from them at the time. So there was no knowledge on the town's part that a septic system was on there.
But the town had the land surveyed by, you know, a third party.
There's a difference of a survey and then as far as lot lines.
Well-
Then as to what the usage, and as far as the usage of it and what's happened on it is based upon permits that were issued, properly executed and asked for and paid for. There wasn't any. And again, as a property owner, you'd think they'd say, hey, wait a second, I've got a septic system here. That wasn't disclosed, or no concern was raised at all. And they accepted the protanto.
Yeah, I can't speak to the prior owner. I know he filed bankruptcy shortly after, so I don't know if the conditions-
And then in relation to, you know, what you purchased, I would think that there would be some sort of title search that would have been done, which would have indicated what was properly built and permitted on the properties.
What I'm hearing back from on my end, as far as my title examiner, my title insurance, and my real estate attorney, was that when the town had done the taking, not only did, I, I mean, there, septic system's underground, so no one could have visually seen it. However, there is a property, it compromised my property line. It went four inches from my foundation. So when you guys had, when the town had done the taking, it actually went diagonally and then because there was no variance filed with that taking, there was nothing to prompt my title examiner to know that those lot lines were like that. There's no variance. I mean, the town violated its own standards as far as property lines and setbacks significantly by, and I got that confirmation when we had sat down with, with the building department, who also said they've taken a conforming structure and made it non-conforming, but based on this taking.
Look, I, you know, I understand your concerns, and I think the only thing the board can do at this very moment, at this town meeting, is to take that land back under our control, ask the state legislature to do so. The rest of the issue is a separate issue that we can take offline, all right?
Thinking, you asked what your exposure could be, that's what your exposure could be. Will it end up being that? Once we get control of it again, it's all subject to discussion. But that's what your exposure should be.
I see a hand raised in the rear. I don't know if raising it because-
You have to come up to the podium, I'm sorry.
Please come up to the podium if you have something to say or ask.
Well, I'm Jane Krieger, I live in 22 Terry Street, as you know. And I did hear the last meeting, because as I said, there were some issues that were left open and some were asked to wait. But apparently, when the town took that land, a title search was not done of all the property. So there, I saw the plan that was done in '05 by design consultants. And if you look at this, it was the Zooka property, but back then, and it was the parents, I believe, who bought it. I didn't bring it tonight, I ran late and wasn't able to prepare for this meeting. But it's on record. Then one, so it wasn't unusual that people, because there were small lots, people bought a lot of lots. So probably the parents had the one property. I do have one map that shows in '83 that it shows the Zooka property as one lot. So I don't have the date, but it's in the deed. It shows that one lot of the Zooka property was transferred to the son. I'm speaking from memory, but I have the record, and you would have the record as well. So, and apparently, the town changed the address. And as it turns out, I'm a little familiar with this, because I did ask the assessor. The addresses were changed on Maple Road and Magnolia, and maybe this Zooka property as well. So we're before in the early deeds, it shows 15, I think, of 13 Magnolia, and have the takings deed. One of the reasons, and it's our property as well, in the takings deed, you'll notice, the town took the feet in all the roads. So the original plan looks like this. So it brought, it looks like this. So the Zooka property is over here somewhere, they had three or whatever, it's in the deeds. And when the town, it looks like, and then, we did not receive letters, because I said to the assessor, I remember at that time. And my father also had a problem with the addresses, where the mail, where it had gone to one address, where it is the practice of the assessor's office to send out letters to several agencies and the owners that the address was changed. Also, if you look at the property cards, I don't know how far back that goes, but I know on Maple Road, when I asked, apparently, there was a flood, and they only have them back to a certain date. But if you look at these deeds here, you will see it. It's confusing, but you can see where at some point, probably whoever then puts addresses on these lots, once they, when they're divided back, then that would have caused confusion probably at that time. It happened all about the time. So anyway-
All right, look, I'm going to cut you off, I don't want to be rude, okay?
That's okay.
But the article has got to do with the town asking the state to allow us to put it back under the purview of the Board of Selectment. I appreciate the research that you've done and others, and I think the thing to do now is to bring all that information forth, maybe in a private meeting, to try to get all the facts together between the assessor and the building department they have in the records and town administrator, and then we'll take the next step. But we can't do anything until we get this article approved by town.
And then, like, just one comment?
At which point in time, then, everybody that has an interest in this particular issue, we certainly will entertain further discussions and try to get the issue resolved.
That would be great, thank you. And if I may just make one more comment. On the survey for design consultant in 2005, if you look at it, they did not mark private wells nor septics. Now, if you go back to some of the earlier properties, I don't think they were, they didn't need a permit back then, right, Steve?
Well, for septic, there would have been no-
No, you see what I'm saying? So I think that's what was the case.
We'll take a look at it, Jane, after we get possession of it again.
And since they don't have town water there, a half acre lot would not allow enough room for a house, a septic, and a private well, right? So a red tract would have been raised then. So I appreciate that you will take it under advisement for all of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, Rita?
Yes, Rita.
Rita Mullin, 1. No. Rita Mullin.
Is this germane to this article?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah.
I sound like the town moderator now, I'm sorry.
You're way nicer.
Because they can't do that at town meetings.
Rita Mullin, 29 Abbott Road. Just to be fair to Mrs. Taylor, so she has an idea about the timeframe on that. Twice in 30 years, I was involved with legislation to take land and give land back for recreation. So if it's in either parks and rec now, or if it's in conservation, the committee needs to vote to say it's okay to go back. And both times when we did it before, I had to go before legislature. And sometimes it was up to a year, whatever, so Mrs. Taylor should know that, that it's possible.
I think it's fair to say, we will contact our legislators and ask them to see if they can put it on a fast track.
Okay.
You know, clearly, there's an issue, and we need to get it resolved.
Do you need a vote before town meeting from either one, Recreation Committee, two?
I'll talk with town council, Rita, we may. I'll check with town.
Certainly a recommendation.
Any more discussion on Article 15? Hearing none, I guess. The board is recommending it, and Mr. O'Leary has presented it at town meeting. And the next item is Article 15, and it's to grant easement to Cappan to Drive. Mr. Gilbert, explain that to everybody?
Certainly. This article would authorize the Board of Selectment to grant an easement over a portion of town-owned property to the owner of an abutting parcel of land in order to provide access to a landlocked parcel.
Any questions or comments? And we have previously voted to recommend. Mr. Yule, you prepared to make, present this article?
I can do that, yes.
Article 16. Do I have?
Can you speak to Cappan to the political?
I asked if there were some questions.
Oh, he shouldn't hear you.
Okay. What's the question? Who's asking a question? Come to the podium, please.
So let me maybe try to help them out.
Yeah.
This will grant access to a piece of parcel of land the town has, 10 acres roughly, that Mary Purney had brought forward to the town as consideration of potential future senior housing.
Right.
I think that's their motivation, is about this article giving, granting them access to this parcel that's been landlocked.
Right. Can I speak to it?
Yes.
And Mr. Wallner. Cappan to Drive, where it abuts the five acres that we had looked at before, the seniors, Michelle Mon and Mary Purney for that group, that they had tried to get the housing-
The board granted Mary half of that property without defining which half or what.
Right, but now that-
For the purposes of seeking a grant to begin a process of building senior housing. And I gather, and I guess this slipped by the board, but CPC was involved in laying that out, that it required to show access to it. So an agreement was set with the developer who wanted to develop one of the lots, and the granting of this easement would allow the actual construction of the, which I think is actually underway or completed, of access to the developer's property, but also to the town property, there's an adjacent lot on the side. So that eventually, that will become a town way.
So based on that, though, is it correct that that 10 acres would, about the five acres, so that if we looked at, now have about 15 acres that we're looking at for potential, if we ever wanted maybe use it for housing, is that 10 acres attached to the other five?
No, I think that 10 acres was the total of that lot.
Prosserich Lane, five acres, and the additional five acres off of Chestnut Street.
But they're, right-
Total of 10.
If it's contiguous, though, would we make, okay.
Yes.
Because if that's the case, we have the senior citizens' action team, North Reading Senior Action Team, and they would look at that, that's a potential housing. And Mr. Wallner, who's the chairman of that committee, was going to speak to it at this time, or to let you know what we're doing, or?
No, I think if-
We'd be interested in-
It would be appropriate, if you want to make a report to town meeting, we have Article 1.
They're just looking for direction.
But what it does, the granting of the easement, first of all, we already own the land, all right? And we had struck a deal with the private developer, which he held up his end of the bargain, which was to construct access to our property, which would in turn give him frontage and access to what was a landlocked parcel of land. He upheld his end of the bargain. It allowed us and other organizations to apply for grants for some private housing there, which didn't come through and didn't come to fruition. What was missing here is that we never followed through on the granting of the easement to Mr. O'Neill. This is the completion of what we committed to do, which would grant him an easement and allow him to sell his property now, which is ready to be developed, but is running into some title problems because the easement hasn't been granted yet. So that's all it's doing. So what it did, though, if you recall, Rita, was it gave the town the opportunity of additional access off of Chestnut Street, rather than going through the other five acres off of Prosserich Lane, where there was some opposition from the neighborhood in Prosserich Lane. So that helped solve a couple of problems for us in relation to getting some more affordable housing in here, or assisted living, and again, providing access off of a street that already existed, which was Chestnut Street and not a small neighborhood. So, but in answer to your question, yes, it's contiguous, the two parcels are contiguous to one another. We would still have access off of Prosserich Lane anyway. We already have access now off of Chestnut Street anyway. This is just to clear up a commitment that we made to Mr. O'Neill, to grant the easement so that he has clear title to sell his property.
Knowing that, the North Reading Senior Action Team would be in favor of that, but do you have an open mic after this is over, so we can speak to?
No.
You have an open session, so we can speak to it after, not do this.
An open mic, Rita, never stop.
We're trying to get through these articles, okay? And making a report on what you're going to do with the land is not germane to this at all.
Right, well, you just wanted to-
And I think it would be appropriate that you make a presentation at town meetings.
And say that you're looking for parcels and looking for access to available land for more affordable senior housing. That would be good.
Which should help you support-
Which you're going.
Right. Mr. Chairman?
I'll see you on.
Yes, Ms. Steele?
Yes. And having listened to Steve so articulately explain this, it would be my suggestion that he does Number 15.
Your suggestion?
That he does Number 15, Article 15.
Steve, since he's up there doing Article 14, 15.
Okay.
Because I don't know the history well enough to-
Okay.
I'd be happy to take 15. So I'll do 14 and 15.
Next is 16.
Article 16 would establish in-town bylaw a process for correcting non-substantive changes to the numbering of bylaws in order to maintain conformity within the Code of North Reading. It would allow us to replace the current process of adding verbiage in individual bylaw amendments to make such corrections. An ideal to the town clerk, the board would be so willing to entertain a presentation.
Okay. Good evening.
Mrs. Stans.
Thank you. Again, it's pretty cut and dry. Currently, as a tag along phrase to every amendment to the code, whether it's a zoning bylaw or a general bylaw, we add a statement that says that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw will be permitted in order that it be in conformance with the Code of North Reading, the numbering and format of the Code of North Reading. And that allows us to make changes if the numbering was incorrect in the warrant or the motion, if the Attorney General's Office were to approve certain sections of bylaws and eliminate one or two sections, we could take it upon ourselves to renumber the subsequent sections of a bylaw so that the numbering sequencing is intact. So this would establish a bylaw to continue that process. These are the only changes the Attorney General's Office does permit because they are non-substantive. So they don't have anything to do with the body of the article or the bylaw, and they are pretty benign changes. Currently, they are always identified with a footnote, and that process would continue under this article.
Okay, and the board has previously voted to recommend this, Barbara, and we thank you for that. Any questions by anybody on the board or in the audience? Mr. Yule, will you take this one?
I will take that one, yes.
That one's easy.
And therefore, you're going to take the next one, too. Article 17, Barbara, you're up there.
All right. So I brought along some heavy muscle with me, which is the moderator, because this involves a couple of different things. Currently, this is regarding visual presentations at town meeting by citizen sponsors of articles. So it doesn't affect the boards and committees that make PowerPoint presentations. Town officials and departments already submitted this-
Town officials and departments already submitted this visual presentations to our IT department prior to town meeting, so they're all integrated onto either a portable device or the town's laptop, which is used at town meetings for viewing presentations. However, there is no process currently in place regarding visual presentations. So, by citizen sponsors of articles. At our recent past town meeting, we had such an instance where a citizen sponsor of an article brought their presentation on their own flash drive and inserted it right into the town equipment. I saw a tremendous flaw in that as far as the security of our equipment, because we don't know if that presentation or the device itself, maybe unbeknownst to anybody, carries a virus which could infect our equipment, could infect the schools internet, you know, system if we were on that as well. So, part of this bylaw addresses that vulnerability, given the extension nature of malware that all of our systems are exposed to on a daily basis today, which we're always cautioned on by our IT department. At the same time, this bylaw would provide a process for the moderator, who is a singular person under mass general law with authority over town meeting, to be able to review a presentation ahead of time regarding relevance to the subject article in order for town meeting to be able to proceed with the proper protocol required to run an effectively-run meeting. So, this article outlines a process that provides both of these areas and still provides a process for citizen sponsors of articles to use, utilize the presentation. Prior to formulating this, I did reach out to the clerk community through email to see if other communities had any existing regulations or bylaws in place addressing this, and I received responses from about 22 communities that were quite varied. To my knowledge, no one has a byline in place, but many have procedures in place that they follow, and the majority of them do require that presentations go through the moderator for prior review. And, you know, I have a listing of these communities. Some don't even require or do not even permit a presentation, so it's even out of the question for them to do that. But generally speaking, those that do, do require it to go through the moderator, to be viewed as far as relevance to the subject article, and to open up a dialogue even between the moderator and the sponsor perhaps to questions prior to it being presented on town meeting floor. And all of that does help to have a effectively-run town meeting. Do you want to ask me a question right now, Mr. Crisco? Certainly.
He's chomping at the bits.
He is, okay.
I'm not chomping at the bits.
I just know if I don't get his attention, he'll look over there and I'll never get it. I love the article, I really do. The only issue, I take objection, I have with it is this 10 days.
Right.
And it just doesn't even seem really fair to our president.
Well, I'm going to give you some, when I crafted this, I really took that into account. Number one, we want to vet it through the IT department and the moderator, so that's two areas. The IT department is a very busy department, it's not a large department, and they cover not just town hall, but the police, the fire, the library, the council on aging. So, they have a lot of commitments. I think we all know that if we're waiting for services from IT, we know how busy they are. So, that's one avenue, because he's got to review it first. He's got to scan it for viruses first before we will even forward it anywhere. Once that's done, then it would get forwarded to the moderator, once we know it's clear of viruses. It's all going to be done electronically now. The moderator works, he's a professional person, he works full-time, so we can't anticipate what his professional schedule or his social schedule is, his personal schedule. So, I think that that timeframe gives enough time to allow for the vetting process. In addition, by the time the moderator receives it, if he finds that there are some slides, perhaps in a presentation, that he questions as to the relevance to the subject article, he has an opportunity then to open up a dialogue with the sponsor and go over those particular slides, let's say, and just have an open dialogue. They could come to an agreement where those slides could be eliminated if he felt that was the case, and the rest of the presentation goes on. But it allows for that back-and-forth communication, so it's not just, oh, these subject slides, you know, are not relevant, so this presentation can't be used. It does open up that dialogue to permit that type of exchange. One of the other things to keep in mind is that citizen-sponsored articles, just as any of us at the municipal level, we have to submit our articles for the June town meeting by the third Monday in March, and that is 11 weeks prior to town meeting, and the third Monday in August for the October town meeting, and that is seven weeks prior to the October town meeting. So, if you use that timeline, somebody submitting an article is already thinking about it and working on it, they actually have nine weeks for preparation towards the June town meeting, and five weeks for preparation towards the October town meeting to get their presentation ready. This only addresses the visual presentation, so it allows the time to go through the vetting process. They can continue to craft their verbal presentation for town meetings up until the night, the evening of town meeting. So, given those timeframes, it seemed like a reasonable time for the citizen sponsors of articles not to put our IT department or the moderator under pressure to review it. That is how I came up with the 10 days.
Oh, I mean, I look at it as PDF should be pretty simple. You really can't do much to a PDF, and they should just 100% be PDF files. You shouldn't accept anything else, right?
Right. I mean, we're talking PowerPoints, basically.
No, I'm a PDF.
Or you're talking a PDF.
I think it eliminates a lot of concern, but I'm not an IT guy, I'd leave it up to the smarter people, but I still take objection to the 10 days because we're trying to stimulate more involvement in town meeting, a lot less. And I think as we, you know, we should limit, and we should be vetting what people want to say and how they want to present. And I mean, of course, there has to be some reasonableness to, you know, profanities and things like that, but I, you know, I think there's some, I have some real concerns with it from an open, an open meeting, that's what the whole concept is.
And what would you, what would you find reasonable, just?
24 hours?
John.
I see an objection.
Then Abby, then Jeff, and then Megan.
Under 10 days. I think that's the start of the process. I mean, the goal is to allow the petitioner to make their presentation. And the IT department, myself, will work with them on that. I think this opens the dialogue. If I get it 24 or 48 hours in advance, I've got to be honest with you, that's not enough time, because there's other documentation that I'm getting 24 and 48 hours in advance.
From us.
I didn't want to throw anybody under the bus. At 3:00 o'clock the day of town meeting, I'm making sure a motion is equivalent to the article. And I go through them all, and then I have to go home and put it all together. The goal would be to open that dialogue, to give them a deadline. They're submitting 11 weeks in advance, and as Barbara states, it's not changing what they present verbally. It's not, it's not taking away free speech. It's making sure that the bullet, look at all of your presentations, making sure that the bullet points are relevant to the article of year. That's all it is.
Abby?
Yeah.
Go to the mic, please.
Does the 10 days allow enough time to go back to John with version two, if John finds a problem with the slides not being whatever?
That would have to start, again, with IT, because you're, again, you're talking about another-
Right, so does the 10 days allow?
We don't know. We don't know, because we can't really address a certain, when IT will get it, and what their other commitments are, when the moderator will get it, and what his commitments are at that time. So, it could, but we can't guarantee that. But definitely the moderator, I think the timeframe allows for the moderator to be able to review it and have an exchange with regard to specific slides that might be in it that could be eliminated, so.
Jeffrey?
Yeah. Presentations that you're talking about are very fluid, and changes sometimes are made up until the night before.
Or the day of.
Or the day of. We do it here, and it's done corporately and so on. I understand the part being concerned about the viruses, so either it's a thumb drive or whatever they're using, you need to make sure that that doesn't have any viruses attached to it, all right? If they give you a PowerPoint, you know, they might, you say they can do their verbal. If they do their verbal and they realize, well, we've got to change the PowerPoint, well, we just gave it to town hall 10 days, you know, seven days ago. So, it doesn't allow for the fluid makeup and quality of the presentation. I realize 24 hours is a very difficult thing and a lot of pressure to put on the moderator, okay? I realize that's very difficult for him, but at the same time, you have an issue of trying, someone trying to get their point across. So, there's a clash here, and, I mean, I couldn't, at this point, support 10 days and not, without change. The verbal is one thing, but if you can't adjust and, and adjust the presentation as needed, then you're setting that presentation up for failure. So, I think, you know, whether it's 48 hours or not, maybe that is more reasonable, maybe not reasonable enough, and I, from your end, okay? But from the person who's bringing a message, they want to be able to have the message heard, and, and this would not, I don't believe, would allow that to happen. I just think it's, it's just too complicated for the messenger. And we, in our role, our job is to, as Mike indicated, is to increase the involvement and have people come to us in such a way that they know they're going to be heard. I'm afraid that the 10 days is a restriction in that, in that way.
Well, I have two alternatives to that section.
Let's hear from a couple of people. Megan, you have, you have to come up to the mic, thank you.
Megan Robertson, 374 Park Street. For someone who does a lot of PowerPoint presentations, I somewhat agree with you, gentlemen, a little bit, but, one, you don't have to do the PowerPoint presentation, you can present it verbally like people have done in the past. This is a visual part of your presentation, in that if you are waiting till the last minute to get it together, it causes a lot of problems anyway, and if you have it started for the 10 days, and maybe there'd be, once it's done, review, and then you may electronically may be able to edit, or there's a typo or something. There, I think there's, could be some flexibility, but I think asking for it 10 days ahead of time, as is, is very good at having someone ready to present when it comes to town meeting. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask and have a fluid, see how it goes, and if it's presenting, if it's preventing people from doing a visual presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, I don't think that's going to affect it until we try it, because I think you really need a lot more time with the IT issue, which takes a lot of time to be sure to vet it through IT versus when you guys are changing your PowerPoint the day before or whatnot, because you're in the system. It's much more easier for IT in regards to that. So, I think it's a safety issue and see how it goes in regards to if it's really that cumbersome on a person who is presenting at town meeting.
Okay. I've got a couple of things to say. One is that, let's separate the security issue from the presentation issue, okay? It would seem to me that our IT department is at town meeting well before town meeting in advance, and I, and I think from the point of view of somebody, including the school department, it brings over their USB sticks, and sometimes we do, right? That there are tools that the IT department can have, they could have a separate laptop, not connected to anything, and they can run a scan on the media, okay? So, I think that that piece can be done the day of town meeting, before you walk in and make the presentation. The issue of the presentation, I think we get into a very gray area here when we talk about reviewing the presentation. If we're reviewing a presentation because it befits the moderator to know, you know, what's, what's going on, many times, he doesn't know exactly what's going to be presented, you know, by any of the boards, or a report that's made, and a lot of the reports are made, which, you know, by putting a presentation. I understand that somebody could put something up there that we don't want up there, and I think, you know, if somebody did that, we could just turn it off and say, this is inappropriate for town meeting. So, I, I'm not sure we have to go as far as you're proposing to go, Barbara, and, and I agree with the security piece of it, I'd like to leave that in there and make it effective that those get tested the day of town meeting, two hours before town meeting or something, and we have someone there to test them. You can be there anyway, setting up. Then Mr. Crisco and then Mr. O'Leary.
Maybe you don't have any electronic files, maybe you provide maybe a couple days in advance, hard copies, and you can just scan everything yourself, and it eliminates any risk if you really think that this is a high-risk issue. I mean, here's another solution, we have a scanner, we can do that very easily, and I think you should limit the page, page numbers as well, so you could scan the stuff relatively easy and get it in to a file. Plus, everything is supposed to be time-limited, which I'm, I don't see that in here, which-
That's driven by the outcome.
Right.
It's five minutes.
Yeah.
It's, the article refers to that all other-
Okay.
-conditions of chapter 172 would be followed, which is-
Sorry, I should have known that.
-the five-minute time limit unless you get leave of the meeting. So, limiting the amount of the scan, that's a chance. You know, somebody could be asking for a leave of the meeting for 20 minutes and the audience denies it, then they have five minutes for their presentation and, you know, whatever they can accomplish in that five-minute period. A couple of alternatives to that 10, 10 calendar day deadline, or 10 business day deadline, is to change it to 10 calendar days. That would put it to the Friday prior to town meeting. If we received a presentation by our 1:00 deadline on Friday or the time business closes, it would get to the IT department on Monday. That would be a one week from town meeting period. Still would be vetted through IT for viruses, still have the opportunity, hopefully for the moderator to view it. So, changing business days to calendar days would make a difference. And another alternative could be to change that Section C that states if the electronic document is not received by the town clerk's office by the above-dated stated date and time, no such visualization shall be permitted at the town meeting, to change that entirely to read, "Consideration shall be given, but cannot be guaranteed to visual presentation submitted after the above-stated deadline," referring to the 10 business days, "subject to the availability of the IT department and the moderator to review the same prior to town meeting." Those are a couple of alternatives to that.
Mr. O'Leary?
What's the current practice for handouts?
Handouts go through the Board of Registars, and that, they, you know, the Board of Registars could meet to approve them, which means that that would require at least 48 hours notice, but they've also voted the authority to me to review them, so I've reviewed handouts up until the end for that.
The end of what?
Right, right up the day before, you know, in some cases.
Or the day of, even.
But then they need to have time to make copies, you know, if they're approved. It doesn't give enough time perhaps for a go back and forth, because I've done that also when I receive requests for handouts at town meetings. We review-
And that's driven by what?
The town bylaws.
Okay.
That is by the town bylaws. And that would be, you know, for, once a handout is approved, we have them right directly at the check-in table, you know, for the checkers to just advise people that this refers to a certain article in the warrant, if they want to pick one up on their way in, and we'll distribute them inside.
And what's the bylaw called for as far as advance notification?
It doesn't. It just says, shall be approved by the Board of Registars.
Right, there's no deadline at all.
There's no deadline.
Right. Couple of points. I agree with the chairman in relation to separating the issue-
I agree with the chairman in relation to separating the issues. You know, if someone wants to use the town's equipment, then there should just be some procedures in place that allow for them to get their flash drive scanned before it's used on a timely basis. I don't think we need a bylaw for that, first and foremost. I don't think we need a bylaw. I thought we'd use some procedures in place. If someone wants to utilize town-owned equipment, we have security measures in place before they get to use it. And just notify the public, you know, that's the need to do. As far as the subject matter itself, most of the attention has been focused on the proponents of an article, you know, citizens petition. Well, with his proponents, many times there's opponents, you know, not the proponents at all, and with just as strong opinions and points of view. We're not talking about addressing them either here, we're just talking about the proponents. I, I'm very concerned about public's access to giving information. And as far as requiring them to have some pretty serious deadlines well in advance of a, of a town meeting, I, I think just stifles participation. And again, I change my mind until I stand up to the podium sometimes. I have every intention of saying one thing, when I get up there, I say something else.
Well, I think, you know...
So to me, I, I, I'm very concerned about that, and I don't, I don't agree with it. I don't, I don't think we should, I think we can limit access to the use of our equipment. I think that's appropriate from a security standpoint. I've been, I was moderator for 11 and a half years here and three years south of the border. You know, 14 and a half years' worth of experience of standing at the podium.
That's before PowerPoint.
Before PowerPoint, not, not necessarily, no.
It's just paper handouts.
I was on the cutting edge, I was on the cutting edge of PowerPoint. But, but even so, I mean, John, you know as well as I do, or anybody who's been involved for years, you never know what someone's going to say or what they're going to present or attempt to, to present. I think we've done a pretty good job of limiting access to handouts. I think what we have is, is very effective. I think something of that nature, you know, could be helpful. But I, again, I don't think we need a bylaw restrict them and require them to give them, give your presentation to the moderator to get a sneak peek as to whether or not it's appropriate with germane and within the four corners of the article. If it isn't within the four corners of the article, he's going to rule it out of order anyway, tell him, shut it off.
Right.
Just like the discussion goes. Regardless of what I'm going to say, if it's germane, either it's germane or it's not.
One thing that I would like to point out, too, is that our position on the stage doesn't allow us to view the screen as well as people down in the audience. So by the time the presentation is seen from the stage...
So half the time, people's, people have made their points before they determine that it's not germane. In other words, we get it out of our mouths before the moderator says, excuse me.
So once the judge says, the jury will disregard these comments, the damage is done.
Right. But I don't think people should necessarily be subjected to that kind of scrutiny prior to, any more than we're subjected to it as town board members. We're not, you know, and what we're going to say individually or collectively. And I don't think the general populace should be exposed to that type of, and again, there are tactics involved in relation to making your presentations and making your points and trying to get something passed through town meeting. And some people aren't necessarily inclined to lay it all to the table, that came to a public hearing as far as...
You know, I'm not trying to look at this as an ad, as a very way.
I understand that, I'm not questioning your motives.
Town officials who make presentations and bring PowerPoints and talk to town meeting, they know the town audience's limitations. They don't want to hear people go on and on. But you also know the protocol of town meeting and what is acceptable and what is not. And oftentimes, if you're having a citizen-sponsored article, you're having people who are there for a special interest and don't necessarily understand the protocol.
I've done a lot of coaching over the years, I've written a lot of motions over the years for people who are not familiar with the process, as John has done, does annually. You know, so I mean, that's part of the process.
But this would open up that dialogue with the moderator and the sponsor.
And that opportunity is still there if people want to reach out. I've had people reach out over the years and still reach out even to me as a member of the board here, not being moderator. Hey, what do I want to do? I have an idea, I want to do these sorts of things. And you coach them through it. You have people who do reach out to you. And then you have others who file the citizen's petition and you don't hear from them until you see them at town meeting or town meeting floor.
But at, at this point, the citizen's petitions get filed with our office. We would be giving them a copy of these procedures and, and opening the door right then and there, which is either 11 weeks or seven weeks prior to the respective town meeting.
There can also be a handout of, of suggestions as far as, as far as utilizing town equipment. It must be okay through, you know, the IT department, you know, prior to town meeting action and whatever, whatever procedures IT wants to institute, 24, 48 hours in advance to ensure this, that, and the other, with a double check just before you plug it in again. Otherwise, bring your own equipment. Bring your own equipment. And there's nothing that precludes people from doing that either.
Well...
And we've had, we've had...
This bylaw would.
I know, and it shouldn't. And I don't believe, I believe it should.
Well, if you want to do that, though, you have to set up the equipment. I mean, the equipment is set up.
The network is used to get the, the data from the computer up to the projector.
Well, that's fine. And that's up to the people then to comply with whatever procedures are put in, town hall procedures that are put into place.
But this addresses that.
That's all, I'm with you. I'm with you on this. We don't need a bylaw.
This would address that through the IT department.
I don't believe we need a bylaw, and in relation to what you'd like people to do in order to help streamline the process and ensure that whatever they wish to proceed with and present to town meeting, if it's going to be a handout, if you're going to have an overhead projection, a PowerPoint presentation as far as the, the germaneness of it all, you know, then you can do a similar procedure as to what we use for the handouts and/or suggest that they meet with the moderator ahead of time, here's his number, do it in advance to ensure that everything will be fine and your presentation will be smooth and easy. I don't think we need bylaws. I just think it's too restrictive, I think it's counterproductive, I think it's counterintuitive in relation to open town meeting and what the concept is. I don't think we should be restricting that type of, so, you can't tell him having a hard time embracing opposing.
Not at all, not at all. You, you, you know, you have to keep it quite poker face.
So I think we can, I think we can handle procedurally, I think we can handle the, the security issue. And I think suggested procedures in relation to citizens petitioners as to what the best practices would be in order to ensure that the presentation is going to be heard on a timely basis and appropriately with the least amount of glitches, run it by the moderator ahead of time and get the input. Because he's just going to remain impartial in relation to the issue itself, other than, is it with germane to the subject matter, is it within the four corners?
If you...
Go for it.
The only, the only thing I can say is that if you don't have a bylaw that mandates the procedure and you just offer suggestions, you may never hear from anybody.
That's all that's needed, though. To me, that's all that's needed. If someone wants to get up there and try and put a, make a PowerPoint presentation on our equipment, we say, I'm sorry, you can't because requirements, oh, you have to get it scanned first, and you didn't come, I'm sorry, you have the mic, you have five minutes. But let them know in advance, that's all. To me, it's just a procedural issue, it's not a bylaw, it's not, there's no need for a bylaw for that. Reasonable people would assume that you have proper security measures in place if some people are going to use your equipment. As far as the content of the matter which they're going to be presenting, that's up to them to make sure it's germane to the article that they sponsored or the article they're opposed to, keeping it germane within the four corners, it's up to the moderator to make that determination. And it's been like this for hundreds of years. I, I don't believe we need a bylaw, and I don't think we should have a bylaw to govern that. I don't think these people should be subjected to, these citizens petitioners, or the opponents, so citizens petition, should be subjected to difficult timelines to maintain, just because they happen to be a citizens petitioner and they're not a town board, committee or commission. It's not fair. Open access, free and open access. So I appreciate the thought, I don't question your motives or any intentions, I think they're all honorable, I think they're good ideas, but I don't think we need bylaws in order to make them work.
Just not to belabor it, but I'm in agreement with my colleagues on that, because I think
as submitted, as being final form, and realistically speaking, most of us that make presentations are modifying and revising them as we go along, right up until the moment of the, you know, or the day of the presentation. And I do agree, one, C is too restrictive, and I, I did observe our moderator has a great command over his meeting room, and I think that that's where the ability to, you know, stop something exists, and, you know, that's the way it should stay, in my opinion.
And, you know, I, I think that we can set up a procedure that, just, just an operating procedure, anything that's going to be installed on the presentation laptop, be screened prior to it by TA, and we can set up a, a time, timeframe to that, to be done that day. It shouldn't be an issue. You know, I'd like to see it done presently, right there, so that it gets scanned and we take the information, put it on the presentation laptop, and it's done. Not to scan it a day before and then say, because God knows what can happen to that device. And many of them have lots of other presentations, information on it when people walk. Second is, you know, the, the part, the gray line part, if, if somebody brings a presentation in and starts to present it, and it's got vulgarity or something that's not germane to the product, we just shut it down. Yeah? Town moderator says, shut that off, and they get shut off. I would recommend a motion here to pass over this article. And if the town clerk and whoever, the town moderator, if they've been working on it, would, you know, like to scale this down and, you know, set up some basic process rules as part of this, if necessary, I'd, I'd entertain that for a, you know, June town meeting. And Mr.?
Just a final comment, because I know you're not a book...
Mr. Moderator.
I don't disagree with either side, but I can't see what comes out. Sometimes by the time I see it, the prob, I don't see it when it comes out. So because of where I'm located. So if we can put the policies in place so that it can be scanned at the meeting, loaded on the computer prior to the meeting, and I'd be happy to reach out to the petitioner and tell him that, and then I can go down and view it on the laptop before we start the meeting. I'm there at 6:00 every time, anytime. If we can have a procedure in place so I can just flip through, because it's just bullet points, I just want to see what's going to go up there before it goes out. Because it would make me feel bad now. I don't worry about what any board committee is going to put on the screen. And it's a different world. I, I don't disagree with you. And we probably don't need the bylaw, and we try a policy like that. So let's, let's work towards putting that in place.
So, and then technology-wise, John, what we're going to do at some point in time when we figure it out is to give you a laptop so that you can be watching the presentations as they're being made. Something like that.
We could do that.
Anything else for Barbara?
I have enough bullet holes in me right now.
You've been through this before.
Yes, I have.
We really appreciate you here advocating for making things better.
Well, certainly the, the security of how, how vulnerable we were, you know, at that moment hit us, you know, that anybody could bring anything on their flash drive and put it in our computer systems. And that started this process of the unknown and the uncertainty. And, and, you know, for the benefit of the citizen sponsor themselves, you know, so that they have a method and some guidelines. That is what the process...
Yeah, and by the way, that's timely, because the risk we had before the new school was built was that we had a laptop and a projector.
Yeah.
And worst case, we would have put a virus on the laptop. It wasn't connected to anything else. Now, the way the system works is the laptop is connected to the network, which communicates with the projector up at the, the top of the auditorium. So that's different. Now we're on the whole school network.
Yeah.
We do need to be more careful. Any further discussion? Do we have a recommendation in the form of a motion, or are we using the Let It Lie recommended document?
No, I would move to pass over Article 17.
Go here a second.
Second.
Second one, Mrs. Maddell. You all in favor of passing over Article?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on this. Sorry that it got bounced over.
That's my heart, disagree with you.
Who's going to make that presentation?
All right, so that article was...
You have 17, Jeff?
Well, you just got off easy, Jeff.
Jeff has it.
Article...
I know how to pick 18.
Funerals and interment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go through the PowerPoint slide here. This article would amend Sections A, C, and E of the current bylaw, excuse me, to do the following: "To allow the Director of Public Works greater flexibility in scheduling due to extenuating circumstances such as weather; to clarify the permitting requirements for burial to occur; and to update the bylaw to reflect the current practice of allowing the addition of a cremation urn in a grave." As the board knows, there was a discussion that took place at the September 8th meeting, and there was a comments made to try to address issues of religion or culture. So the modification that the Public Works Director and I have proposed would be that in the bylaw, in Section A of the revision on the in-place text, to add after the words "causes beyond human control," the words "documented cultural or religious limitations." And the intention there is to provide for, in the bylaw, flexibility in the timeline depending upon what cultural or religious restrictions that might be in place for burial.
Okay, and this is an article that we have previously voted to make a recommendation at town meeting. Do we want to change that at this point? Or do we want to wait to town meeting to make a recommendation? Mr. Ullman?
Yes, I'm, I'm just reading it again and again, and I'm, I'm getting...
This is really to accommodate...
I'm sorry?
This is to accommodate what we haven't been accommodating.
Yes, no, no, that, that, that I understand. I don't know, I understand religious limitations.
Mm-hmm.
But cultural's kind of broad, and why that would, would be selected. Religious, I mean, because usually when someone passes on, you have a religious ceremony of one religion or another. Culturally, it is, I can't, I don't see how culturally it would apply.
So I, I don't want to profess to classify a perspective that an individual or a family might have, whether that perspective is due to their culture or due to their religion. But in response to the board's comments, we wanted to provide a maximum amount of flexibility in either-or case. And that's what led to the language, religious or cultural or religious, to be, to be written.
I, I guess because, to me, cultural is so, so broad and vague, because religious is specific. But I, I do have a problem with the, the use of the word cultural, because, I mean, I'm trying to come up with some example for, for cultural. I mean, can anybody come up with an example of a cultural reason why...
I, I can't cite a specific one, respectfully, I can't cite a specific one, but I, I could see an instance where somebody says that they're of a particular nationality that might not be a well-known nationality and that culturally in that, in that country, the individual is buried within a time restriction that's less than 24 hours or whatever it might be. You know, again, I, I can't point to one to say, oh, that's one that's an example.
No, I understand, I don't mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot either, but I mean, I, I usually...
I studied theology, not culture.
When you see the word religious, I mean, there, there are multitude of religions that have specific burial rights and requirements, okay? So...
Well, we, again, we were trying to respond to the board's pleasure, well, well, you know, whatever direction the board wants to take.
Just to back up again, what's the rationale for the, what was the need for the change? What caused the need for the change?
The feedback that we got from the board when we discussed, were discussing the article on September 8th.
No, not this change, I mean, the need for the bylaw change.
To, to update the bylaw to reflect the current practices in most cases. That was, that was the situation. So with regard to the urn, they already allow the urn to be buried in the, in the grave. They wanted to reflect that in the bylaw because, yeah, it was silent to it or it may have restricted it.
We're shortening the notice time...
Right.
...to prepare a grave for certain circumstances.
With regard to the requirements, my understanding is that if you look in Section C, that there, those are requirements that are in place in order for a burial to occur at this point in time, but it wasn't clearly articulated in the bylaw. And again, the Public Works Director is not here, I don't know whether the superintendent is familiar or not, but I recall him saying that there was state law that was governing at least a portion of the language in Section C. But I need to confirm that with him, and can do so before the town meeting. Mark, I don't know if you have an answer on that question, but I assume not.
I'm looking to take notes right now.
Okay. If you come across anything, let us know. And with regard to Section A, right now, the bylaw basically requires that the notice requirement is 24 hours. The only way to make an exception from the, the bylaw is through an order of the board of selectmen in the case of death from a contagious disease. This... This would provide additional flexibility for the Public Works Director to look at the totality of a situation and make exceptions for the time requirements. And I think it was brought up in discussion in both ways, whether to delay or expedite the timing of a burial.
Mrs. Gilbert?
The documented cultural or religious limitations is not in the law.
That's correct.
We know.
Right.
That's why it's highlighted.
That was based upon discussions the Board had at our previous meeting.
All right.
And so, in the culture, the reason, if we go back to our discussion previously, the word "culture" came up was if, you know, there is something, within somebody's culture, that they have to be buried within 24 hours of the death of their family, culture, or whatever it may be, that's what we were trying to capture. That was the goal and the objective of adding those words. So, I'm not sure if maybe you don't recall the conversations, Yule, but that's why we sent the direction back off to add those words.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm fine as amended.
I make a recommendation to approve Article 18 as amended.
I didn't, I didn't get to talk yet.
So, we have a motion in a second.
Yeah, let's discuss it.
There is a discussion. This is Manopelli.
I do recall that discussion, and I do recall we were trying to capture all possibilities, to give all possible leeway, but I don't recall discussing what the meaning of the changes to see were, and it just seems, what permits required by the laws of the Commonwealth. I thought it was a Board of Health permit, so what does that mean?
Michael?
So, I am aware that there's a permit, and I, forgive me for not knowing who's issuing it, but it is at the state level, if it gets issued, certifying the death of an individual. I think if there's additional questions regarding that, I would suggest that we have the Public Works Director present, unless Mr. Clark is able, or willing to stand in. But unfortunately, due to a previously scheduled conflict, the Public Works Director wasn't able to be here. So, what I would recommend is if there are questions, we have him attend the October 5th meeting before, to speak to these issues.
Okay, Mr. Yule, did you have a comment before we...
No.
Either withdraw the current motion, or vote it up or down?
No, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't agree with the word "cultural," but it's...
So, what the town administrator is suggesting is that we wait to, the meeting before town meeting, and ask Mr. Countavelli to answer the remaining questions, before we make a final decision.
Yeah, because I would...
In which case, I would ask Mr. Frisco to look for his motion, if it was him, I think it was.
If I made the motion our second, I'll withdraw mine in deference to the members who still have questions that are unanswered.
Mr. Frisco?
I will remove my motion to approve the article as amended, if other board members still have questions.
Okay, so, basically, Mr. Gilbert will invite Mr., he'll be there anyway at the town meeting.
He will, I'll have him come early.
To attend our board meeting, which we meet, are we meeting at 5:30 or 6:00?
We've not decided a time yet.
Aaron decided yet.
Maybe 4 o'clock.
Maybe we'll decide to have a meeting before then, that'll depend on what else flows out of this.
Who's going to do the article?
In any case, I would ask Kate to do that.
Sure.
Just so you know, you only have one article so far.
It's okay.
It's good, yeah, it's great.
Okay.
My favorite one.
Next is Article 19, snow removal on streets and sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, this article would propose to amend Chapter 158-9, snow removal on streets and sidewalks, by accepting the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 80, which would allow the town to invoice and assess non-residential property owners for cost incurred by the town to remove snow when non-residential property owners failed to do so. And as I brought up at the September 8th meeting, what we've done here is try to craft an article that would provide the additional step of, in the instance where the process of issuing fines is not causing for the snow to be removed from a sidewalk, that the town would have the capability to go and remove the snow with its own equipment, and then to assess the cost to the town, cost to include the entire cost for the enforcement program, from the actual cost of the contractor to the staff on-site to accompany the contractor, through to the very beginning of the enforcement actions taken by the police department, and any expense incurred, we would be modeling it to be imposed in that way. Again, the intention was to take the existing bylaw and not make wholesale change to it, but to put the, to get it to a point where we would have some assurance of an ability to get the snow removed, if the property owner declined to do so. Mr. Yule?
I'm sorry, I do have another slide, which I have to discuss with Mr. Yule, I believe, but the enforcement process would be as follows, and this is through discussion with the police chief and the Public Works Director. Chief, correct me if anything on here is incorrect from your recollection, but the snow would end, in pursuit to the bylaw, 24 hours after the snowfall ends is the deadline for property owners to remove sidewalk snow. A day after that, or 48 hours after the snowfall ended, the inspections or warnings would be issued by the police department. Another day after that, the first fine by the police department, and then the day after that, the second fine by the police department. That would be, again, the 50 and the $100 fines for the 72 hours and 96 hours respectively. And that point thereafter would be daily fines, and the DPW would be authorized, not required, but authorized, to remove the snow and assess the cost to the property owner. One thing I'll note, at one point, this was being discussed as a lien, it is not a lien, it'd be an assessment similar to a betterment that would show up on the next tax bill, as I looked to the Finance Director to confirm.
Ever since?
Every six months, okay. So, it wouldn't go through the lien process, it would be assessed to the tax bill in a shorter amount of time.
Mr. Frisco?
But if they don't pay, it becomes a lien?
That's what I was just going to say. So, if they don't pay the betterment, then it would, you know, become a lien, just like any other service or tax.
Mr. Frisco?
I guess, this is the first I heard, the 50 and the, I'm sure we talked about it years ago, but that just seems awfully low. I mean, what's going to, that's not going to motivate anybody to shovel their walkways. I mean, it should be $500, the first fine, and the second one should be $1,000, or something ridiculous like that, because that's not going to motivate anybody to do the right thing here. I think we really need to take a hard stance in this, because I got to tell you, I've been on the Board six years, every year, this comes up. We, I would like to just get this right, that allows us to execute this bylaw correctly, for the best interest of the public and the public's safety. 50 and $100 isn't going to cut it, people, not going to cut it. And I still haven't seen a rate that we are talking about in this, which I appreciate, you're looking at it from a fully loaded perspective. But I'd like the Board to take a stance tonight, to change the fine, if there's 24 hours, wait, where are those? After 72 hours, the first fine, it should be far more than 50.
So, we maintain the existing fine structure?
And I'll tell you why. We have to pay a police officer to go out there and do this inspection, and there's other stuff going on around town, all right? So, we're limited in staff, as we all know, now we're going to pay them to go out and get $50? I'm not, I'm not a fan.
Mr. Gilbert?
We didn't make any modifications to the existing fine, fine structure that's in the town bylaw.
I don't think that was...
I'm sorry, this is the first, I didn't come up at the last meeting.
It wouldn't be in the forecourt of the article, at this point, to change it. Right?
It sure will. General title.
I'm just curious, are you expanding the scope of the general bylaws, snow removal on streets and sidewalks?
So, you think we could make a change if we wanted?
I think we could run it by the moderator, ensure that, you know, it's open for discussion.
Okay, I have a different issue that, you know, when you look at the Schedule 24, 48, 72, and 24 hours later, it snows again, or 48 hours, it snows again. We had instances of that last year, one after another. How do we interpret that?
I think that, I can tell, I'm not going to defer to the police chief, but I recall from my discussions with him last year, that what would happen is because of the timeline with even being able to get out and go and do the assessments, it often wasn't 48 hours after the snowfall had ended, it would be longer than that. And I think in some cases, and again, I don't want to speak for the chief, but they make a calculated decision as to whether or not the forecast yield, it's going to, yields is going to be productive to go out and enforce. So, in the case last year, I can remember very vividly, we would have a snowstorm and have two more on the horizon within 24, 48 hours of each other. So, in those instances, if I recall correctly, the police department wasn't out and enforcing. I think that the enforcement push happened in two or three instances over the course of the winter, if I recall, when we saw, we had gaps in the weather and foresaw extended periods of time before the next snowfall.
I'm bringing it up, because a question would get asked on town meeting floor, and we need to have an answer.
The obligation is there, 24 hours after the storm, shovel. If the next storm comes, shovel after that. I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
It is.
No, it's not, because 48 hours inspection warning on the police department, and over that 48-hour period, it snowed again.
So...
Right, so they have to, I know the answer, I mean, from a practical point of view, you would be saying, okay, after the snowstorm, right? So, it's the second snowstorm, right? You really can't measure whether it's been shoveled or not, or maybe...
Yes, you can.
The neighbor has a snowstorm. The guy does that one.
What are you going to do, you're going to find him because?
Well, yeah.
So, I think from a practical point of view, obviously, you have to, you have to start this, you know, if you have two snowstorms in a row, and we have a lot of cases where we do have that, that you wait until that second storm is over, and you start counting that.
Just as long as we're consistent.
The bottom line is, it's hard to create a, something that covers every single of us.
Just as long as we're consistent in how we are applying it, is what's important.
Mr. Yule?
Yeah, first of all, I think we can make it more complicated than it needs to be. First of all, by example, if it snows one day, and then you wait the 24 hours, and 36 hours later, it starts to snow again, if they did, removed the snow within that 24, after that 24-hour period, you'd already see a path, and then you'd know it snowed on top of them. So, it's kind of a common sense thing, you'll just see that. The concerns that I have about this bylaw, first of all, the one that I, the part that I like about it best is that it specifically gives a timeframe for which you have to remove the snow, which is 24 hours, okay? Other than that, I have concerns about the town getting involved with the removal of snow, and then maybe perhaps making itself accountable for doing a good job or a bad job. I think that if the town is involved with it, they're going to have to do it with the manpower that they have, and if they do that, they're going to take somebody away from somebody, another job that needs to be done, and there's going to be a ripple effect to do the workflow. Chances are, they won't get to remove the snow anywhere within a reasonable amount of time. Having the town involved in it, it puts a burden on the town. So, I think that, you know, we, if, on the theory, on the basis of, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The last time, and I'll repeat myself again, the last time we went through this, all right, had we stuck with it a few years ago, we wouldn't have this issue, or we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. Because the last time, we had applied fines, they were paid, and then we exonerated the property owners from having, from those fines. So, it did work last time, and enforcing it this time would just simply solve the problem. With regard, with regard to the amount of the fine, you know, $50, you're right, Mike, I think that's a very small amount, but when it comes into $100 a day, it's $500, you know, it's, yeah, it's $700 a week, all right? Even if you leaned it under this policy, it would just keep going and build up. So, it's making a very simple thing, by just simply, police do what they do, their job is to enforce the law. They're driving down Main Street, and they see it hasn't been snowed, shoved, all they have to do is go into the establishment, write a ticket, most it take five minutes, do it, and move on. It goes by the next day, it's still there, you can do it, same thing, $100 a day, or whatever the numbers are. So, it's really a very simple process, and this, to me, makes it more complicated than it, than it needs to be. I won't support it as it is, all right? And I will speak to it at town meeting if it's, if this is going to go forward, as a dissent, if I'm the dissenting person.
So, bottom line is, you don't want the town involved with snow removal?
I don't think they need to be, it ties up our workflows.
Michael, and then...
Certainly, it's the pleasure of the Board, but I note that I think that the police chief would want me to vocalize here, that a fine structure that would decrease the number of times that the police department has to mobilize and do enforcement is something I think that would be beneficial. Again, that wasn't something that we felt we were being asked to look at, and we were looking at this going back to last, to last spring, but, last winter, I should say, but if the Board were going to start looking at the fines, I mean, and I'll say it, because the chief has told me, I think he struggles to see the value in doing even the warning in going out, because he's mobilizing his crew, and I think it was like eight or 10 hours worth of your guy's time.
Three officers, so it wasn't five minutes, but it took a significant amount of time, and that was during the snowstorm. We were swamped to begin with.
So, I only offer that more because it's a different way of looking and making changes to this bylaw. We're certainly, you know, willing to look at it that way, but that wasn't how we approached this initially.
Mr. Frisco?
Really supports what I was going to say. Jeff, you brought up that the burden that what we're proposing here in regards to the DPW. Well, I think there's even a more burden on the police department, because we only have three men on a shift, sometimes only two. Police department has contractors and a sizable staff that's out there. So, I think the burden is really on the police department. I think you're looking at it all wrong, and I think this is not what we want, to be paying our officers that we're paying $50, $60 an hour, or whatever, to do their job, to be out looking at sidewalks. If we're going to do it, then give me a fine schedule that makes people do what they're supposed to do. So, I want to vote no on it too, Jeff, unless we, we focus on the fines that are around $500 or $600 every time. That's the only thing that gets their attention, and I don't want to deal with this anymore. We've been doing this forever. Let's come up with something that's executable.
It's a stretch, the way it's written.
No, it's reality.
It's a stretch, because it's more about Chapter 80.
The property owners don't want to do their job.
At this point, I think we should just eliminate the bylaw altogether, and forget about show, snow shovel. It seems to me, they will never settle this, never, never, never.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, everybody's had some good suggestions, but we can't seem to get collectively together on this. Raising the fines, there'll be, we'll have the Chamber of Commerce banging on the door, they were screaming and yelling when we had the existing fines. You know, I think that until we can come to some uniform conclusion of how we should operate this, and, you know, it's not black and white either, you know, because of the fact we could have snowstorm after snowstorm, you have four-inch snowstorms, and you have 18-inch snowstorms, and you got, when they're back-to-back, you have the police department busy doing other things that are probably more important. You know, I'm not planning on, I'm just making a point.
I'm going to talk to your point, sir.
I saw you just jump on. I'm just trying to get this Board to converge on something, okay? And I'm saying that, you know, we can't seem to come to any agreement on this.
May I comment?
Yes, you, of course, again.
Meg Robertson, 374 Park Street, a member of the Commission on Disability. I'm also a 24-year member, resident of the town, I'm a walker. The Commission on Disability put this bylaw in very naively many years ago, thinking, we did it, people will do the right thing. Obviously, that did not happen, because I can count on my fingers, one or two, three places that the businesses did make the attempt to shovel their sidewalks. Last year, it was the worst winter since '96, for 100 inches of snow. It would have been fine if, oh, we couldn't get around to doing or whatnot. I couldn't walk in North Reading for almost five months. I couldn't walk in North Reading for almost five months, because the snow piles never melted. If that was a road, people would've been up in arms. Sidewalks are public right-ofways. It's an ADA issue, it's an access. Your sidewalk is, allows people to get from point A to point B as roads do, and they have, you have to rate them as the same usage, and start looking at them as equal in regards to clearing curb cuts and sidewalks around the town. And also re-clearing them as the snowplow does, the sidewalk snowplow in the town for the sidewalk, the school routes, which are cleared once, and then they're never cleared again, and then they become icy and melting, and there's no other, nothing done to them except once in those areas. So there's a lot of different issues here. But as, as Mr. Yule said, there was no enforcement, there was no biting the bullet and saying, you know what, you need to do this, we enforce it, the police officers went out and did a, a job that was great, and it was much appreciated, but they weren't backed up. I, I think that, I think the, I agree that the, um, amounts are very low, but other cities and towns do enforce it, very similar things, and they enforce it, and they just do it, and that gets done, and it becomes a norm that it's a citizen, right of citizenship to clear your sidewalks. The, Walk Boston has done a number of recommendations for snow and ice removal, as well as the Massachusetts M.A., MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Planning Association, in regards to different ways of doing it. There's no one right way to doing it, but I think having the option of the town doing the clearing the sidewalks and putting some cost to it also could wake people up and say, I'm not, I, I don't wanna pay that, it's cheaper for me to afford to have somebody else do it when I need it done. But this is really, really frustrating to me, to live in a town that this does not look at access for pedestrians and people who do, can't drive, or wanna walk down to the CVS, and not have to get in my car and drive down, which is, is two minutes from my house, but I can't walk across the street or on a sidewalk to get to CVS. It's ridiculous. So I, I don't have a good solution for you, but I think if, if, if they had enforced the rules that were there, we would be a better spot than we are now, as what Mr. Yule said. But I, there are people that are very frustrated, and if you treated the roads like you do treat your sidewalks, it's, it's, they have to be, you have to give them equal, uh, access. So I'm very frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, Ellen.
I just think taking a step is better than not having it or not having nothing in place. I mean, because we all saw people walking on the main roads because businesses weren't clearing up the sidewalks. We, we've all, we all lived through it. It's much safer for us to have something in place. Can we expand the ticketing agent? Can we give, can anyone else have the authority to give the warnings?
We'll have to consult with town council, see, and with the departments to see where it would be done. I mean, I, I get a bit wary of, you know, it's an enforcement action, obviously, and we have a limited number of enforcement officials, but we could look at options. I don't wanna state, I don't wanna...
Or the House, maybe?
Yeah, and I don't wanna identify anyone by name, but there are a few areas that we could look at.
Right.
So just, just to summarize, kind of get where we are. Under the current bylaw and the changes that we've made previously, right, there's a fining structure, and we just implement a fine per day for not doing it, and that's what's being done, or what's supposed to be done, correct? What's being proposed here is that we change that to a, a schedule where there's a...
Nope, it's keep the same schedule in place, but just authorize the DPW to remove it, if we so choose.
That's the only change.
The only change is just authorize the DPW...
The only change is to, for the DPW to come in after so many days.
They have the, the authority to go do it.
They have the authority.
Doesn't mean they gotta do it.
Okay.
For discussion purposes, I put the bullets up there about the enforcement process, and I think that's largely how it's happening today, or pretty close there too, although I remember they were...
So...
It's a fine structure per day.
So given that, then, the, the, the issue is motivation, more motivation needed for the property owners to get out and get a contractor or whatever to remove the snow from their property. And as Mike has suggested, a stiffer fine might help do that. So I think those are the items that are on the table right now. Am I missing something at this point?
No, but I stay corrected too. The, the article itself would not allow us to amend the, the general bylaws, the way that it's written.
Mr. Yule asked a question that I don't believe he received an answer to, and that is where, if we go and clear these sidewalks, do we assume now the liability associated with the quality of the stuff?
No, I understand what you're referring to.
I know.
I mean, just to answer the question, we worked with town council to craft this language. I did not ask them that specific question, they did not give me any guidance that said, if you do this, you may be incurring liability, but we could put that question to them for future discussion.
And I, I would suggest that we table this motion, this, this article, and so that we can adjust the, the penalties.
Take another town meeting, we can't, we can't do it at this town meeting.
No, I know that, that's why, okay, so...
So, so, right now, the position of the board is, recommendation we made at town meeting, and what you're suggesting is at town meeting, right, we pass over the article.
Yes.
So we'll have nothing for this winter season?
No, we have the existing structure.
We have the existing structure.
And, and, and I sincerely believe that...
So the difference is that DPW doesn't come and do the job.
So we put the burden back on our police department at these ridiculously low rates? I'll vote against it.
Well, the one thing we can't do is adjust the rates based on the language in this article.
So we'd still be in the same...
So you're gonna spend limited resources and maybe get a $50 fine out of someone?
No.
Doesn't make any sense.
We'll wind up getting more, but, I'm sorry, Mike, I don't mean to interrupt.
No.
The, 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 um, nothing, it's, it's still the police department that will have to go through the process of, uh, giving summons to the property owners anyway, whether we have the town involved with the snow removal or not, that's not going to change. So, um, in, in, so my point is, is that taking the, we need to take the DPW out of it, take the, and, and take the town out of it, and improve it by having a, a much stronger fine schedule, as Mike suggests, because we don't have that now anyway. So the police is still gonna have to do their job, whether we, uh, whether we don't use, uh, go forward with this article or not. Am I correct? So they're gonna, that doesn't change.
Somebody has to do it.
Right, and, and right now, it would have to be the police. So, so to make this a stronger, um, bylaw, what I think we, we need to do is, is pass over to town meeting, and then approach getting the fine levels, eliminate the, the warning, because they'd get a notice in the newspaper anyway, so get rid of the, the, uh, the warning, and, and start at $200 a day, or something like that, okay? And that'll give it some teeth, and, and they'll know, they'll get the idea. I know that my mechanic, uh, when he, when the police approached, and they said to him, if you don't remove the snow by tomorrow, we're gonna fine you $100. By, by 5:00, they were out there removing that snow. $100 can be a lot of money to small businesses that we have on Main Street.
Mr. O'Leary.
In light of the fact that the only thing that we're changing here is authorizing the DPW to remove the snow, and it may be in the public's interest at some point that we deploy our DPW to do that, I think including that in the bylaw, which would allow us to assess the cost to the property owner who didn't do it, is a good thing. I think that up to this point, until the board gets their act together and gets concluded though, I think we, we should, we would exercise that authority judiciously and selectively on a public safety standpoint, from a public safety standpoint. Right now, but for, why not authorize the DPW to do it and charge for it, if we find that it's necessary from a public safety standpoint? Police law says this stuff has to be moved now, get it out of there. I think we should allow for us to do that and charge for it.
What about dollar amounts? There's no dollar amounts on there?
No, there's gonna be a formula, and people can challenge it once they get the bill. And it's certainly not going to be cost-effective for them to wait for the DPW to do it, because to me, it's gonna be pretty damn hefty.
Well, by that time, they would accumulate the fines, hopefully.
Right, correct.
But, you know...
But we still have the cost, the burden.
So I, so I think, I mean, it comes down to right now, enforcement, enforcement of the current bylaws and making people do it. And again, we've been somewhat lax in doing that, we were a little bit more, you know... We're somewhat, we're somewhat lax, but we, we're trying to do that, so let's, you know, matter of policy, make sure that that's implemented, that we can do it, but also authorize the DPW to remove the snow, and allow the town to charge for that. I think it's a good idea.
John, you had a comment?
Yeah, to, to, to Steve's point, if you implement this, you won't need to change the level of those fines.
No.
Any small business owner might pay 50, might pay 100, might pay the next 100, or he might not be, feel like he's gotta do something. If he knows DPW's coming down to do it, he knows it isn't cheap.
Or a contractor, that is, more or less, it's gonna be a contractor, not our own DPW, it's gonna be outside contractor, that we're gonna charge, gonna charge us, and we're gonna charge them.
This will cause the enforcement. Then, just the second thing, if you ever put this bylaw back in the warrant, when you say 158-9, and then you wanna change different sections, just put the words "but not limited to," so that'll put everything on the table, because then you're gonna change the fines kind of...
Right.
That's, I was gonna say that, because you're, you're accepted in the statute, and the fines are in the statute, that's why I think it's...
What you said, you said A and B.
At this point, is, is the board generally okay to support this article as a stance of amendment?
I want the response by the board.
There's nothing to prevent us from changing it at June town meeting, but at least this will give us a little stronger coverage.
Well, let's get the legal counsel's review on liability before we, I say we recommend it at that meeting, and wait to get the answer back, because we may vote on something that we may assume a lot of liability.
I, I would disagree about the liability issue, because the town is liable on its public right-ofway issue, and that the town is liable also if it's not cleared. So you...
I like to see that from legal counsel.
Yeah, well, it's an interpretation, but as a public right-ofway, cities and towns have been sued in New Hampshire for not clearing sidewalks, and the liability of when somebody's walking on the sidewalk. So I wanted to mention that as in regards to support this amendment, and, I mean, this, whatever it's called, I'm sorry, bylaw, I'm sorry, I'm tired. Because the town may have to assume responsibility to clear sidewalks by the DPW for safety and also public access. So you may have to do it anyway.
Yeah, I'd like to be, I'd like to be able to assess the cost to the appropriate rule.
All right, so I guess, if I understand where we're at right now, we can support this, we just want some additional information from town council, and I'll make a final recommendation at town meeting, at our meeting before town meeting. Okay, moving on.
Who's doing the article?
I'll do the article. I need some punishment.
Thanks, Bob.
Article 20, general bylaws, chapter 145, sex offender, this is an article to remove the current bylaw.
That's correct.
Because the current bylaw, um, basically, uh, senses, was a Supreme Court ruling?
Yeah, it was.
That said that the, uh, the state law is illegal, and therefore, we have to follow. Michael, you had a comment about that.
I did.
Are you still gonna make that comment?
Well, I spoke, I spoke with Representative Jones today about my position on this, and my position for the people in the audience and at home is, I, I voted against the article. I want us to pass over the article and not do anything. Even though the chief and his workforce can't enforce it, doesn't mean that we should go ahead and throw away all the hard work that we've done in our bylaw, just means that we can't enforce it. Because I'm hoping the legislation's gonna come to their senses and do something. They can't just let this subject matter go by the wayside because of the SJC's decision. Something has to be addressed here. And my hope is that they will address it, and then if they even come up with some kind of a, a small adjustment, then all we have to go in for is a bylaw adjustment based on whatever the final legislation comes out to be, rather than throw the whole baby out with the bathwater here. So I'm gonna encourage the board to pass over the article, and as Representative Jones had recommended that we do that as well, because he felt the same way as I do. He thinks the legislation is gonna have to address this. So let's go to town meeting, let's pass over it, but the chief, obviously, he cannot enforce it, but doesn't mean that he's doing anything wrong by, we're doing anything wrong as a town by having the bylaw exist. As long as we don't enforce it, we're not breaking any law.
Okay, then Mr. Yule, and then hopefully we'll hear a comment from the chief. Mr. Yule.
Yes, I, I concur with Mike's viewpoint on this. I also had a conversation with Representative Jones as well, and leaving this in positions us for future enactments of sex offender laws going forward. So I think we are in agreement on, on this.
Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, I know that I'm a bearer of bad news, I also had a conversation with Representative Jones regarding this same issue, and I heard very loud and clear from him, his perspective, but it's also my obligation to tell you that I spoke with town council again today, twice with regard to this, and they advised that the town take action to repeal the bylaw, based on the fact that Supreme Judicial Court has recently determined that bylaws such as this, very broadly, are invalid. I spoke with them regarding the potential, A, for the fact that we're not enforcing it anyway, it's on the books, and the, two or three days after the decision came down, based on the guidance of town council, we stopped enforcing it. They understood that, and they had recommended that. I spoke with them with regard to the fact that we were considering putting in an amendment to the bylaw that would effectively say that the bylaw is on the books, but that the, it's not being enforced. So in other words, they add a line that says pursuant to the decision of the Supreme Judicial Court as of August 27th, or whatever the date was, this bylaw shall not be enforced. And they indicated that the likelihood was very certain that the Attorney General would look at that bylaw amendment and say, you can't do that, this bylaw is invalid, and we can't authorize you to have it continue to be on the books. And finally, I think there was concern from the part of town council that it does send a conflicting message to our public safety officers, and while I know the chief can give them direct guidance in terms of how they act day in and day out, the fact that it's on the books does expose us to somebody trying to cite an individual for non-compliance with it. I know the chief wouldn't be pursuing that, but the risk is that at some point in time, somebody else may. The final piece that they shared with me was, from a standpoint of the appearance of the town, you know, individuals who are looking at the town may question or complain to us, to say, we're not enforcing a bylaw on the books with regard to residency, why not? And we then have to explain it. So again, it's a policy decision by the board, I feel obligated to share all of that, because they did follow up with town council with regard to the matter, and again, they, they pretty strongly recommended against leaving it on the books.
Mr. Frisk.
One, I was recommending we pass over it, not create a different bylaw, or make a modification that states that we're not gonna enforce the bylaw, I'd say pass over it. And I don't really see what risks we're assuming, but at the end of the day, we have to assume some risk, and I think this is a worthy area to assume some risk, because when the legislation comes down, and as Representative Jones has told me, there is going to be something. We're gonna be far ahead of any other town and city, because we already have something on the book that may just have to be modified, which means our process will go a lot faster, and our residents will be protected. So I really, you know, in all due respect to the legal counsel, I haven't been very impressed by them, and in this particular case, I think they're being risk averse, and I'm willing to accept the risk. On this particular article, absolutely, I'm voting to pass over.
Mr. Yule.
Yes, and sometimes we have to make a statement, and, and I think that by passing over this and keeping the sex offender law that we have in place, keeping it in place, sends a message, and other towns, other communities, even though it's unenforceable, it's a step in the right direction to, uh, putting pressure on our representatives at the State House that, you know, towns have these bylaws, so they must be for it. So we, we can't allow, I mean, I, I understand legally and constitutionally and rights and all that, but I kind of view this almost as a freedom of speech. We're saying it, it's there, and that's, that's, that's our belief as a town at this point, so I think we should pass over it, keep the bylaw as it is. as a town at this point. So I think we should pass over it, keep the bylaw as it is.
I guess, you know, I have to ask the question then, why do we bother to go to town council? We pay town council to try to keep this out of trouble. Now, it's hard to imagine how we can get in trouble by keeping it on the books if we don't enforce it. But I think it creates a problem. You have police department not enforcing a bylaw and just because it's illegal, I can understand why you wouldn't be able to enforce it. And then we, in terms of the work that's been done, you know, if the legislature goes ahead and makes a change, we still have to go back and modify or present the bylaw again. We don't have to do all the work that we did. It's already done. I don't think there's any loss there.
Oh, no. It's just Copeland Page makes out even more money. I mean, this is, you know, that's fine.
I just don't think, I think we should follow the law and take it off the books.
We can debate it.
We can still lobby our legislature to do something about it. Mr. Manipelli, you wanna weigh in here?
I agree with my colleagues on keeping it on the books. And I was just wondering, do you know what the restriction is? Is it a thousand feet like the Lynn bylaw was or is it sort of a smaller?
The chief will probably know the answer to that question. I don't know what I've handled. I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. The question was, what is the restriction in terms of number of feet for a residency?
Seven hundred. So it's not the distance, it's the spirit of the bylaw that's essentially conflicts with the sex offender registry law. That's why the case was out of Lynn. Three sex offenders sued the city of Lynn. They lost a case in Superior Court. They then appealed and they lost again. So my only concern with leaving it on the books is that the expectation levels of the community and people thinking that if the bylaw is there, they expect it to be enforced. And for us just to not enforce it, I'm not gonna be here forever. This board's not gonna be here forever and stays on the books forever. You know, down the road, does, you know, a sex offender moves next to somebody and they're expecting us to enforce that bylaw? That would be my only concern and how do we get that information out of the community?
Mr. Prisco?
I say we give it a year, chief. Let's readdress this in October town meeting next year. Let's give it a year. Let's give the legislators a little time to get their heads straight on this. And in a year from now, if we don't see any movement from the legislators, then I would be in favor, if I'm still here then, of voting to delete it. But let's give it a year. Let's not just rush to a decision. You know, we, it's okay sometimes as a board to assume some risk. You know, that's what we're here for. It's what we get paid the big bucks to do.
And from what I've read from town council, they didn't say that the town incurred any liability by leaving it on the books. So I think it's perception and the expectation level of the community unless...
We can manage it. And you gotta manage it and the town administrator and we as well, as decision makers and leaders, we have to manage it. Give it a year.
So when, and you can read the decision, it specifically states that it violates the spirit of the sex offender registry law. So essentially, there's documentation, there's notifications on residencies that are already put in place. They're saying that this conflicts with that. So many articles in the sex offender registry law essentially aren't enforceable on that end. So maybe the legislature does fix them. I'm not sure. I heard today that there was not really much discussion about it and this happened just about three weeks ago. And there are about fifty communities that are affected as well. And you said town council's recommending it, but they did say that there would be no liability by leaving it there. So.
Well, I'm asking for another forty-nine weeks. It's only been three weeks. So let's give it forty-nine more weeks. Let's see. Whatever the majority of the board wants to do.
Any other comments? Mr. O'Leary?
I say take it off the books.
Is that a motion?
No, that's a comment right now, Rod. No, I say I think we should take it off the books. I think we should, the state Supreme Court made a decision, you know, and ruled it invalid. I mean, when we passed it, it was valid. It went through the Attorney General's office and it was approved. But it's now been adjudicated that it's not legal. I don't think we should, I don't think we should get in the habit of the position or of trying to have legislation, our local legislation on the books that we know is invalid, to make a public statement or political statement. We can make those statements anyway publicly. We can call on our legislators to correct it. And to your point, Mr. Chairman, all the hard work that was put into this is not lost. And again, even if they tweak it, that's what Mr. Prisco is hoping for, we can tweak it. It's the same type of, it'll be done at one town meeting. Bring it back and get it put on the books in proper fashion. But I don't think it's good practice for us to be knowingly leaving illegal bylaws on the books. I don't think it's good practice. You know, it's a good political statement and I'm all for making the political statement, don't get me wrong, but I don't think this is the proper manner in which we should be doing it. I think we should be following council's advice. I think we should be ensuring that our public safety officials and public officials who are responsible for enforcing our bylaws, you know, have bylaws which are enforceable. And we shouldn't have them on the books if they're not. We shouldn't send, you know, mixed messages. You know, and as far as relying upon the legislature to do the right thing, there's been a lot more disappointment than there has been satisfaction over the years, you know. And if they're gonna address it, they're gonna address it. That's fine.
Mrs. Manipelli, then, Michael.
Just point of information, I guess, is since it did get the informator of the Attorney General, was there any indication from town council as to whether we're gonna hear back from, you know, current Attorney General in terms of the legality of it, as it...
No, in my conversations today, the, you know, the option or the availability of a proactive decision coming forth wasn't something that was thrown out. The only mention of the Attorney General was, again, that if we were to attempt to modify the bylaw, it probably wouldn't get through the Attorney General upon being reviewed based on this most recent decision. And I don't know if you were on the board at the time, and you weren't. So we got a pretty comprehensive opinion from town, from the Attorney General stating all of the caveats and risks.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Associated with it. I'd be happy to share that with you. But they forewarned us that this, you know, that there was a lot out there. But we worked with town council and we were able to, pardon the expression, but I guess kinda thread the needle, so to speak, to have just the right type of language that got through. So, I mean, it was not for the lack of effort. There was a lot of effort. They went into this bylaw last fall, countless iterations of maps that were looked at, trying to determine what it says, looking at bus routes. It was all well thought out and we got it through. Credit to everybody involved, including this board. But in the end, unfortunately, this is a situation that we find ourselves in.
If I could just add one comment. So...
Mr. Prisco? Chief?
I'll go.
Town council did advise there's no appeal of this. This is final.
Yes.
But they did talk about if this were amended bylaw or a new bylaw that the Attorney General would not approve at this point.
Just to remind the board that you did vote three to one in favor of recommending this at town meeting. So why don't you just leave, unless somebody else wants to make a new motion and change what they've already been voting. I know, Kate, you weren't here at the meeting, so you wanna make a new motion and try to, but you guys voted three to one in favor of it and then we'll just deal with it on town meeting floor? I mean, it's up to you.
Well, we've had a long discussion and we've listened to pros and cons, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it'd be appropriate at least to get a sense of where the board is on it. I am in favor of this article to remove it. If we still have it three to one, that's fine. If it's three to two, that's fine. If it's changed, then I'll entertain a motion.
I didn't understand. You're in favor of?
The article, which would remove it from the bylaw.
Yes.
Well, I'll give it a shot. I'd like to make a motion that we pass over Article twenty.
Who here is second?
Second.
The, the...
Kate, second.
Kate, are you seconding the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor of passing over this article? Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor against?
Aye.
All right. So the current position of the board is to pass over the article on the three to two. And therefore, one of you will get up and...
I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Prisco?
Unless somebody else really wants to.
No, it's okay. Okay. Article twenty-one, zoning bylaw. To see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town, I'll threaten Mr....
As a read, Mr. Chairman. There's no changes being proposed. It's just incorporate all previous modifications.
Can I do that one? Can I do that one?
I can do this one.
Bob, do that one.
And we've already recommended it. And then we've already dealt with the twenty-two and twenty-three. So the next item on our agenda is minutes of July thirteen, two thousand fifteen executive session. Mrs. Manipelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the July thirteen, two thousand and fifteen executive session minutes as written.
Second.
That's good. Good balance.
Kind of be reasonably fair and also highest of people's interests.
That's good. Sorry.
We have a motion. Did I hear a second? I'm sorry. Second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Executive session, we normally wouldn't discuss anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous? We also have the September eighth, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September eighth, two thousand and fifteen regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Manipelli, second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous? We also have an executive session for the same date. Mrs. Manipelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September eighth, two thousand and fifteen executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So, and then to vote on the remaining warrant articles, we're already taking care of that tonight. Public comment is done. Town administrators report. Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As I cited previously, our certified free cash for the general fund as of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen is one million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars. For the water enterprise, it's two hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. For the Hillview enterprise, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars. And for Parks and Recreation, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars. And I think you all received by email a copy of the recapitulation sheets the Department of Revenue sent out last week. The job books for the senior rebate program will be available on Thursday, September twenty-fourth. The books are located at the town hall, senior center and library. Jobs are in all areas of town government, town hall, police, fire, council on aging, library and schools. Applications should be returned no later than October eighth for full consideration. Just a reminder, the rules of eligibility are as follows. Sixty years of age or older, applicant cannot apply until reaching their sixtieth birthday. Must be a North Reading resident with documented official residency. A North Reading homeowner who pays taxes on the domestic, on the domicile he or she is living in. They must also show that they're one of the trustees of the house, if it's a trust that's owning the house. And again, just to note, program participants who do all of their work, which can be ninety-seven point five hours, receive five hundred dollars off of their tax bill. I know that this is a program that's seen a lot of good participation over the years, but I just offer it up for those that might be watching at home or in a future point in time to consider applying if they're eligible. And I just wanna note, I'd like to thank Karen Marlin in my office for her continued stewardship of the program. It's been a tremendous asset for our residents and for our employees and I commend the board for going after when they established the program. Attached is a summary of a streamlined fire, attached please find a summary of streamlined fire prevention program that the town intends to implement through the fire department effective in January of two thousand and sixteen. The program, which is called the Compliance Engine, connects the fire department, contracted inspections companies and commercial entities delivering fire and life safety inspection reports in a streamlined reporting structure. The program will promote life safety and reduce system malfunctions at properties that are required to have inspections by code, particularly those properties that might not otherwise receive an annual inspection from the fire department. Longtime Sergeant, Sergeant Lawrence Tremblay retired last month from the police department. Sergeant Tremblay had served thirty-two years in the North Reading Police Department. As a result of Sergeant Tremblay's retirement, three promotions have occurred. Kevin Donley to the rank of sergeant, Scott Tilton to full-time detective and Sean O'Leary to detective school resource officer. I offer congratulations to all and thank you to Sergeant Tremblay for his service to the town. As has been and will be publicized, the police department is hosting a drug take-back day this coming Saturday, September twenty-sixth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. It's a free and anonymous event that gives the public an opportunity to dispose of potentially dangerous, expired, unused or unwanted prescription medication. The police department is also partnering with Ryers Store to reward children for doing the right thing. Three dollar coupons to Ryers will be issued by North Reading police officers to young residents who are caught doing the right thing, including wearing a helmet while riding a bicycle, crossing the street aside in the crosswalk, or walking on the sidewalk while on the right side of the road. Commend the police department for their ingenuity of that program and for working with Ryers. We also recognize Ryers for their participation. Finally, the town has been very patient with us as we schedule road resurfacing projects. Hydrant preparation continues on Havel Street and milling of Havel Street is planned to occur the week of October twelfth. Paving of Havel and Central Streets is scheduled to occur the following week, week of October nineteenth. The castings on Central Street have been selectively skirted with asphalt to reduce the exposure to the traveling public. And that concludes my comments at this point in time. Thank you to the board.
Any questions with town administrator? Mr. Yule?
I have to say that I do like the police department partnering with Ryers Store, but I could just see the kid on the, on his bike biking and the police car coming up behind him with his sirens after him giving, hey, here's, here's a three dollar coupon for wearing a helmet.
They've shown a few of those kinds of things on the news lately.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Leary, old and new business.
Again, just getting back to Larry Tremblay. Again, Larry born and raised in town, put in thirty-two years with the police department, but also during the course of those thirty-two years and longer, contributed a significant amount of time and his own time and resources to the betterment of our community. I congratulate him on his thirty-two years of service and on his retirement and wish him well for many years to come. Additionally, I'd like to remind people again that the school open house is gonna be September thirtieth, six p.m. Come one, come all. Come see the, come showcase the place. It really looks terrific and the opening of school, pretty much without a hitch and things are going well and runs smoothly and the place looks beautiful. So September thirtieth, which is a Wednesday evening, six p.m., at the high school, middle school complex. So come on down. And lastly, I meant to mention in the last meeting and I forgot, I apologize, passing of one of our World War II veterans, Ralph Costanza, North Street, passed away recently. And Ralph, as I said, was a World War II veteran and a prominent local businessman for several years in North Reading and contributed greatly to the community. And we mourn his loss and send our condolences to his wife, Marsha, and his daughter Karen and son Ralph Junior. Ralph was a good guy and again, good local businessman. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, I'm gonna miss Larry Tremblay. Fortunately, he can retire and he's in good health and so on, but I know he's done a lot in the community, not only as a police officer, but with wrestling, that's his, I believe that's his love in life. And so I congratulate him on thirty-two years and retiring. Unfortunately, I didn't realize Ralph had passed away. That is unfortunate. Anytime a World War II or any veteran passes away, it, it, don't mean to be melodramatic, but it always makes me feel that we lost someone who stood up and gave us the opportunity to be in this room and do the things that we do. So to the Costanza family, I give my sympathies. There, there were two letters in the transcript and I think we should at least look at them out of any respect or appreciation. Two letters, one was by Jim Kirin and the other one was Walter Fitzmars with regard to the water. And when I read them, it seems to make a lot of sense to me that... And when I read them, it seems to make a lot of sense to me that even though the rates are effective on a given day, they're paying, paying, the public is paying for water that they, that they already bought, really, or used under the old rate structure. So I think that, I think we, as a board, should look at that and see what we can do because it just, you know, you buy something, and then after you use it, they tell you what the price is, and it doesn't seem to be right. So unless I misunderstood?
I think we should let Mr. Gilbert comment on that later. Chair?
I apologize, the hour's late, and I'm trying to keep everything straight in my head, so I neglected to bring that up, but we were aware of the second, now the second letter that's come in to the transcript. And we didn't take it lightly, in terms of the concern at least, I didn't take it lightly. I had multiple conversations with the public works director and with the water utility superintendent, and I asked that the finance director also look at what's required under state law, to talk with the auditor relative to best practices, and to do some research as to what happens in other communities. And the bottom line is that for a community that does quarterly billing as we do, most communities handle it in the way that we handle it, which is that we set a read date of July 1 for the previous quarter that's ended. And what gets lost in the discussion is the read can take a number of weeks to take place. So we start on July 1, we may not finish until August 1, depending upon how well things go. And if the board remembers, we did estimated billing in January because we couldn't do any reading based on the amount of snow that was on the ground. So the auditor reports that that's a very common practice in terms of how we handle billing. I will tell you that we have an opportunity with the new software and new meter system that we'll be purchasing through the water department within the next year to look at going to a more regular billing cycle, which could potentially address this. But there are shortfalls with that as well, there are pluses and there are minuses, and we'll need to look at it. But for the purpose of the public understanding, I think all of us at this table who pay a water bill certainly sympathize and understand what individuals are going through, but this is a common custom that occurs throughout the state in towns that bill quarterly. It's been common to North Reading in terms of how we've billed over the years as well, and it is consistent with state law, certainly not illegal or improper, and is a reflection of the way the reading and the budget cycle come together as of July 1.
Well, I do appreciate you being proactive in that once you showed the letters, and I don't know if you spoke to the gentleman or not or what have you, but?
I've not.
Yeah, no, okay, so I appreciate you moving quickly on that.
Are we not going to have something put in the paper?
Yeah, Mr. Clark will be submitting to Ms. Turoz a letter to the editor to clarify those facts.
Here's the question that I had, is when we vote on the region, did we do that in November?
That was done in June this year.
I'm sorry?
It was done in June this year.
June, okay. All right. So when we vote, is it for, and I'm trying to remember, is it for a period of time from 2016 through 2000, through, through the whole year?
It's a fiscal year.
Okay, so that, that rate is for a 12-month period, right?
For all bills issued in that period.
You know, you're saying issued, that's different than, what I'm getting at is, is we did the same thing the year before, and so we said the rate for those 12 months is going to be X.
Mm-hmm.
All right? Well, that's not true if we're, the last quarter, we're billing the new rate for the last quarter of the previous bill that we, that rates that we set. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? We set 12 months.
No, it's still a 12-month cycle because we've been doing it forever this way.
I understand that. I understand that. But I think you can appreciate the argument there, that you fill it for 12 months, but then when the new rate came into effect, we're charging for the last quarter of water used going forward. So I think that's, that's where the question is.
I think it's a legitimate question that warrants explanation. I would only offer that when the rate is approved, the rate is a billing rate for fiscal year 16. And each bill issued in fiscal year 16 will be billed at that, at that rate. So there.
It evens out over time. I understand, I understand what you're saying.
It never drops. It evens out over time, but the town's ahead of the consumer all the time.
This has been consistent with what we've done forever.
I know that that's the argument.
What I'm hearing is there is an option, and we could vote to approve monthly billing.
Based on technology, yes. There are, there are advantages and there are disadvantages that we'll have to look at.
We need to have the automatic water metering system.
Well, I mean, you can also, I'm sorry. You can, you can also say that when the rate, when you approve the rate, okay, you can say that, instead of saying that the rate goes up on this day, you say the rate goes up on this date for water used.
Yeah, I think we're learning that lesson, Jeffrey. Do you have anything else?
No.
Mrs.?
Yeah, if you'd like. Well, you want me to? I'll do it. I'll do it.
Then this is, I, this has to do with the FERC hearings, and they're going to have the FERC hearing in Franklin Pierce University Fieldhouse, University Drive in Ridge, New Hampshire, if someone does want to go. The, the, FERC has, this will be the last scoping session by FERC, but they did extend the comment period to October 16, 2015. So anybody want?
I, I find this extremely confusing. Is it, I had, captured a copy of the Londonderry Times, and on the very back page, a full-page ad, talking about a 75, yeah, 75-mile gas line going into New Hampshire, going into New Hampshire, and by Tennessee Valley, and Dear Friends of Kindergarten, right? And then a list of these meeting dates. And it seems like, and they were all up in New Hampshire. So I don't know whether that's got anything to do with the pipeline coming down here, or what's being proposed to go up into New Hampshire. I'm just, you know.
But it's important not to sort of, I mean, it has a docket, we can read the docket, just of members of the general public. This is a notice issued by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. It's docket number, P as in Peter, F as in Frank, 14-22-000. The date and the time, this is actually September 29, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. As Select Manille said.
See, what's confusing about it is that the, the gas pipeline, as it's proposed, coming down across New York and the state into Drakeet and then down here. And they're talking about a meeting, having a meeting in New Hampshire.
Well, this is, ours is the Lynnfield Lateral, and that is completely different than what, if they're going north in New Hampshire.
I understand that.
Probably off of Drakeet, probably.
Mr.?
So when the route was revised in December of 2014, the route which previously cut across north, central, and northern Middlesex County to Drakeet kind of peeled off and went into New Hampshire, and kind of makes a big loop down into Drakeet. And so those communities, much like some of the communities to our south and east, are further behind in digesting the project. So we knew what was happening in the project. The project at that point was brand new to them, so the door knocking started, the serving began, and I think now, only now is FERC catching up.
So it is the same pipeline, it's just that the route, as we originally understood it.
Right. And, and the fact they have, they have their own, and they, and they now have their own coalition as well.
Right.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Miss Manipelli, sir.
Just because, just to get the information out there to the general public, because this also allows people to make written comments, which are as the equivalent to the, the hearing officers as, someone making an oral presentation, that they will, they have a sign-up of speakers beginning one hour in advance. And this is saying the scoping meeting will begin with a brief description of the review process, after which speakers will be called, the meeting will end once all speakers have provided their comments, or 11:00 p.m., whichever comes first. They can, it's supposed to start at 6:00. Three minutes for each commenter, so speakers should structure their oral comments accordingly, and that if any written comments will be incorporated apparently into the hearing. And there's a website to review the other transcripts of meetings.
Could you repeat that, please?
We all got, we all left a copy.
We all got a copy there.
And maybe this can be posted.
You can put it on the project page, I'm right.
Sure, so people can actually look at it. But just to get that information out there, because there, people do question about this as well, and, you know, wanting to know what's going on with that process, so.
Do you have anything else?
That was it, just to make sure that gets out there.
This is fine, this is good, too. I was, I'm talking about the Governor's Cup, but maybe you want to give a quick plug on that? I don't know. You want me to do it?
Late for the hour, just everybody has to know October 4, Friday is the commission's cap class, gentlemen.
Or Rita, sign me up for a foursome. I haven't got around to taking care of it.
He's good for it.
I'm good for it, yeah. Same people.
You should do it. You should do it. Participate, it's good.
And thank you for what you folks do all the time. God bless you, God bless you, and bless you. Thank you for doing this.
That was only four.
Just a quick update on the J.T. Berry, and we continue to move forward. I'm hoping, Michael, you could forward me the council's comments on the RFP.
Yeah.
When you have a chance. We did get the bids back on the survey. We only had one bidder, but it's a well-known bidder. CPC says that it's a very good qualified bidder, and the price came in well within our budget, so we should be good there. And if she hadn't awarded it today, I assume it will be tomorrow. So that'll get underway. And that's really all I have right now.
Was that meeting held at the transportation building, or is it coming up?
It's coming up. It's October, God help me, 11?
But the original date was postponed.
It was postponed.
It's supposed to be this week.
I'll get it for you, one second.
Yeah, could, could you have, James, I've just forwarded it to us.
Sure.
Okay, and?
The data doesn't make the transportation, that'd be great.
Yeah. Just a couple of things. I don't know, we, did we mention previously that we met with MWRA? So we met with MWRA, and then just last week, we met with Reading, at Reading with the engineering people, and just moving this thing along, we're going to keep it on that schedule. And the reception in Reading has been excellent.
And they will be attending town meeting.
They want to work with us, yeah. And Michael is preparing a update for town meeting, and it'll be done as a report at the beginning of town meeting, on where we are with water.
It's October 19.
And lastly, I just wanted to remind the board where our next meeting is scheduled for October 5. It's, it'll either be 5:30 or 6 o'clock, we'll determine that based on what has to be done for town meeting, and that's just prior to town meeting. That meeting will be held, I don't know if we have a room yet.
Not yet.
But it'll be held over at the new high school.
I'm sorry, what meeting was that?
The me, our next board meeting prior to town meeting. Town meeting. And then the following, on the 14th, we are meeting, doing our strategic planning meeting, which will be held where? We've done it at the Hillview in the past.
I'm anticipating the same location as last year, which was the police department training room. Has some new furnishings, so.
Police training room?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so our next meeting is Monday, October 19.
Yeah, town meeting.
So 28th, we held it, but when I, it was gone.
I, right now, I don't think we need another meeting.
How disappointing.
Yeah.
Time is two and one, so.
Yeah. 14th is Wednesday at 6 o'clock, and it'll be over at the, why do I have, yeah, 6 o'clock, over at the police station meeting room. Karen will probably contact you and ask you what you want for dinner. And we will be feeding Mr. Toros, too, for that in the evening. And the following meeting we have is scheduled for October 19, and in the morning at 7:30, is that the D.C.A.M. meeting? They got moved, right? Or is it now moved from there?
It's the 19th.
19.
7:30 to?
Yeah. Yeah. So the meeting that we talked, Michael talked about for D.C.A.M. that got moved is now the 19th.
Still don't have any information yet, though. I've received nothing.
And just, just to go into November, for those that are making plans, our normal schedule would be the first Monday and third Monday, which would be the second and 16th. And I haven't gone any further with meeting dates. I thank everybody for working so hard to keep this meeting well on, reasonable schedule, even though it's been a long meeting, we've got a lot done. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. O'Leary, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?